All right. The Tuesday, September 19th, 2023 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country. One nation, united in its own with liberty, peace, and justice.
The Eden Prairie City Council offers its residents an opportunity to address the council on specific issues. I'd like to read the open podium invitation. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting. Council meetings typically occur the first and third Tuesday of each month. These open podiums occur from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and subject matter so we can be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. Mr. Gettle, we have a donation this evening.
We do, Mayor. Mr. Lothammer will handle that.
Your honor, council members, this is a donation from the Charlotte Bruning family. Some of you I know remember Charlotte. She's no longer with us, but was a really vibrant part of our senior center. And not just the garden, which she was very instrumental in getting going and also taking care of. And you can see a bench out there that's dedicated to her. But I think what I remember most about Charlotte is that any of our events that had music, Charlotte would be dancing and with the biggest smile on her face. And whether she had a willing dance partner or not, she was out there dancing. She also served on our senior advisory board and was really instrumental in a lot of the events that happened. So we really appreciate the contribution from her family members that will go to continuing to make this garden even more vibrant in her memory.
The dancing piece of that is one of the many reasons I will probably never have a bench named for me. Do not dance. This is really nice, and I always say when donations come into the city, that whether they're large or small, they all help our tax dollars go further. So we really, really appreciate them. So, council, if there's no other questions, would somebody make a motion to receive this donation?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the donation of $465 from the family of Charlotte Bruning towards the maintenance of the senior center garden area.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Approval of the agenda. I have one item to add at the conclusion of the meeting, so it won't impede anyone else here. Under council member reports, I just want to address really the Minnetonka council meeting that occurred last evening where they were discussing a carjacking and policing. And I'm pulling together seven or eight mayors from the local area, Edina, Hopkins, Bloomington, Minnetonka, to Eden Prairie this Friday for breakfast and just trying to talk about what's our next steps as suburban mayors dealing with some youth car crimes. So I just, I want to add that into the council member report time. Is there anything else to add to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Any edits or comments, questions about either the minutes of the workshop held September 5th or the council meeting held that same evening? If not, is there a motion to approve both minutes?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. City council meeting held Tuesday, September 5th, 2023.
Sir, second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Consent calendar. Just in event any of you are newer to governmental processes, we put a lot of fairly housekeeping perfunctory items into one place and approve them all at one time, but I always give options to our council. Are there any items on the consent calendar you'd like to pull for discussion or learn more about or even vote on separately? Anyone? If not, then is there a motion to approve items A through J on the consent calendar?
Move to approve items A through J on the consent calendar.
Sir, second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. Moving to our public hearings. First public hearing is Three Oaks Estates. Mr. Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor and council member. Yes, indeed it is. The applicant here at this location is requesting approval to develop 9614 Crestwood Terrace into five single-family lots and one outlot. The parcel is located south Pioneer Trail and is currently vacant. The property is bordered by single-family development on the north, east, and west sides, and parks and open space on the south. As I stated, this is a pretty straightforward proposal for five single-family lots. The applicant is here to provide a presentation and an overview. Staff and the applicant are able to answer any questions the council may have, and then you may hold a public hearing.
Perfect. Yes, come forward and give your name and address, company you work for, and present your proposal. Thanks for being here this evening.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Haskin. I am the owner, neighbor, and developer of 9614 Crestwood Terrace, also known as the Three Oaks Estates. The Three Oaks development is a very simple six-lot residential development. Five lots will be residential with direct access to Crestwood Terrace. The other lot will be an outlot that will be dedicated to the city of Eden Prairie. The residential lots will vary in size between just a half an acre to just under one acre, and lot width ranging from 78 to 130 feet in width. The proposed tree replacement plan is aimed to ride privacy between Lot 1 and the existing homes along Ponrosa Court. The development will help preserve Riley Creek as the outlot will be providing a buffer and protection that is owned by the city of Eden Prairie. And the trail between 9618 Crestwood Terrace and 18653 Ponrosa Court will be completed. From a neighborhood standpoint, the new lots will conform and complement the existing neighbors.
Council, any questions of the proponent and/or staff at this time? Or should we open up for a public hearing, then we can always close that and you can ask more, whatever you prefer? Would you like to right now?
I'm okay right now.
Oh, okay.
As far as if I could ask.
Absolutely. Then maybe take a seat and we'll call you back up if we need you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And so, moving ahead then, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council this evening on, just got to get this right, on the Three Oaks Estate issue? Please come forward, give your name and address. All right. Seeing none. Council, why don't you close the public hearing, and then we'll proceed with any questions or comments you have, and then make the second part of the motion. So.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Discussing then this proposal. Councilmember Freiberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. I walked that lot today, and beautiful lot. I got a question. It has on the front of those lot. It'd probably be the lot that's closest going down towards Pioneer, some of the most beautiful trees I've seen in that condition. Okay, so naturally, I'm going to ask a couple of questions if I can because they're that good. What's the plan that you see on that lot? Because the one I'm looking at, I've never, I don't know if I've ever seen a pine tree look like it's almost 100-foot tall in that beautiful a shape.
Unfortunately, with the grade as necessary, a lot of those lots, those trees will be removed. The Offermans, the original owners of the property, they planted those trees intention of operating a Christmas tree farm, but they never got to harvesting them. That's why they're all in such neat rows, and because of that, the trees are starting to grow into each other and kind of starve themselves out. But with that, we will be putting in, I believe it is 45 to 50 trees. That will be your replacement. And again, much of those will be planted along. That'll be Lot 1 and Ponrosa Court.
There's no way you can save that trees I'm talking about. As far as I'm, I know about the blue spruce. I get that right there. I understand that. I can see how you're saying they're growing. But I think you know which tree I'm talking about as you're going, you're looking in. That seems to stand above all else. And heritage tree is a big deal with me.
Mm-hmm.
I'd really, and you know, one of the things we save, we've replaced trees with trees we cut down. But when we're cutting down, you know, for building a 75-foot tree of this almost perfection, I don't say that lightly. I mean, I was really impressed with that. Then replacing it with, you know, X amount of caliber inches is a big difference. So I guess I hope you consider what I'm saying, okay? I guess that's the right way to say it. Because it just really makes a lot, you know, that lot just stand and pop.
Yes. I'm also a licensed appraiser, and I deal a lot with combination. So I know exactly how valuable trees are, and I typically represent the landowners. So I know what a 100-year-old tree, from a sentimental standpoint and from aesthetic value means. And all the heritage trees that have been marked by the tree inventory, all the heritage trees on site are being protected. So if that, if that white pine, if I think I know what you're talking about.
I don't see any tree bigger than that on those.
Yeah. If it's the one I'm thinking about and it is a heritage tree, it will be preserved.
Good. That's what I wanted to hear. Okay.
You know, Mark, the other thing, I was just thinking out loud here, but obviously, our developer's not the only one that has simply brought this project in, and then here it is, right? It's like it's been previewed by staff, they've gone over it with a fine-tooth, you know, comb, and then they've looked at these trees. I'm sure they've, we know this, but I'm sure that they've made suggestions on saving what they can, and then it goes through planning.
They've given another suggestion.
Right, right. No, thank you. I appreciate that. We do have great staff that are also hopefully vetting this as well. So thank you. Yes, council, oh, is that it? Councilmember Freiberg for now? Okay. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you.
So when I look at the, when I look at the document, I'm not sure I saw anything related to EV charger.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Electric vehicle charger on your garage. Is that pre, is going to be prewired?
The EV charger? This is going to be a private development, so that'll be up to the owner and their builder. So it will be all custom home builds.
I see. So that means I buy the lot, then up to me to build the way I want to build?
Correct. By city ordinance, if they want to have solar panels, as long as the city permits it, EV chargers, all that will be up to the owner of the lot.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Mr. Ellis, if I could ask just a question about the filtration basin as well. So I'm assuming it captures the water from all five lots, but it seems fairly decent size. Does it help out any other areas that are currently noncompliant or just simply captures water on this property?
Mayor Case. The infiltration gallery only captures water from this five-unit subdivision, and it routes it to the north where it eventually discharges into Riley Creek. But it's stormwater, Riley Creek, yeah, but it's stormwater that is currently not being treated. So it does provide that benefit.
Got it. Council, anything else? If not, it sounds like you're not expressing any reservations. So if anyone would like to make the remainder of the motion, which are the last four bullet points.
I'll approve the first reading of the ordinance for a zoning district change from rural to R1-9.5 and parks and open space on 5.06 acres, and adopt a resolution for a preliminary plat to divide one lot into five lots and one outlot on 5.06 acres, and adopt a resolution for the findings of fact in support of park dedication fees, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Great. Sir, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. Five-zero. Have a nice evening. Or you can stay. It's pretty exciting.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Mr. Gettle, we're moving on to the Kensley Townhome Project by Pulte.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this project is a planned unit development proposal. Thank you. Yeah, no, it's all good. For planned district review with waivers and a zoning district change from rural to RM 6.5 on 6.13 acres. This proposal is to construct 42 owner-occupied townhomes at 17305 and 17325 Pioneer Trail. The property is located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Dell and Pioneer Trail. Surrounding uses include townhomes to the south and the west, duplexes to the north, and single-family homes to the east. The proposal also includes an extension, requested extension of Valley Road to Dell Road to access the townhomes to the private drive extending north and east from Valley Road. The different units are arranged in groups of four, five, or six units within the buildings. There are, as I mentioned, waivers that are being requested that I believe the developer will walk through, but staff can also address those waivers as well. The developer is here to provide a presentation to the city council, and then staff also, the community development director and the public works director, also have some information to present to the council following the presentation by Pulte prior to the public hearing that we would hold. And then, you know, as customary, staff and the applicant could answer any questions that the council may have before or after the public hearing.
Great. Proponent, please come forward. Give your name and address, company you work for.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dean Lottner. I'm the manager of land planning and entitlement. Work for Pulte Homes, and we're located at 1650 West 82nd Street in Bloomington, Minnesota. If I could have the PowerPoint, please. All right. I was, I was told that all of you studiously watched the planning commission meeting, so I'm.
Twice.
Twice, okay. So I'll make this brief and then stand for questions. So again, brief introduction. I said I'm Dean Lottner with Pulte Homes. We're going to take a look at the neighborhood design real quick, our townhomes that we're proposing to build, and then talk a little bit about the schedule, and then stand for questions. As was stated, this is a two-story, 42-town home development. It's located at Pioneer Dell. It's infill. Comp plan guidance of the city of Eden Prairie has this guided for five to 14 units per acre. We're towards the lower end of that goal, of course, but still are over the straight zoning limit by .1 acre per unit. So that is one of the waivers that staff mentioned. We'll do our best to preserve what we can of existing trees as well to help screen the existing neighbors. We imagine these homes will sell for the low 400s to middle 500s. There will be a homeowners association that will take care of the lawn care, snow removal, roads. And the city also has a usable open space requirement along with their park dedication, and our proposal meets that requirement. Real briefly, there were a small amount of hydroxic soils found on the site. It's below 1,000 square feet, so it's considered de minimis, and they were low quality. There is a certain amount of tree preservation that is required, so we will meet those requirements both through our landscape plan and cash-in lieu. We did contact the DNR and ran an NHIS, found that there were no endangered species on the site. The site had also been visited by our consultant of ours to indicate that there was not the habitat necessary to support potential endangered species. Just want to point out how close we are to the existing neighbors. So this would be in that northeast corner of the development. Please forgive, this is a somewhat rudimentary picture, but it helps, I think, kind of identify the fact that there's a pretty good buffer between that single-family home in the northwest corner of the existing development and where we're proposing to build townhomes. There is one home to the south there that sits quite deeply back on the lot, but we're still 90 feet away from that existing home. And then, of course, to the south, we're over 100 feet away from our initial unit to the existing neighborhood to the south, and we are proposing, in the event that the Valley Road connection is to be made, that we would, we would put a fence in there to help screen headlights and create opportunity for privacy. The townhomes that we're proposing are pictured on the screen. This would be, of course, a four-unit building example. This would give you a feel for what the first-floor living would look like. It's kind of an open concept. Our homes are 1,800 to 2,400 square feet, two-stall garage, two-car parking in the driveways, and they tend to live more like a single-family home with that open-concept feel. This would be some of the bedrooms that you might see on the upper level. We're often asked about our buyers. Who are our buyers? All kinds of folks. Of course, we get, do get some first-time buyers. We might get some young couples, starting out with families. But about 30% of our townhome buyers tend to be senior citizens. In summary, our proposal does meet the guidance of the city's comp plan. We're providing needed housing types for the community. We've done our best to provide a thoughtful design to the neighborhood. We've responded to a variety of staff comments in coming up with this plan, and we believe that with the added architectural features, we're going to be building a very aesthetically pleasing neighborhood. As you're well aware of, we were before your planning commission at the end of August. We're here tonight and hope to be back on the 17th of October. Should this application be approved, we would look forward to beginning develop spring of 2024. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Council, just any questions about clarifying what was said? We can ask other deeper questions you have at a future point. And I'll give an example. I just have one clarifying question. I'll model this that you mentioned that if the road is not connected through, wait, I think you said the opposite. If the road is connected through, you would build the fence to block headlights. My question would be, would you build it either way? Because the lights are still coming south on what would be the private road out of this townhome development. And either way, the same lights are aimed at those four, five, six townhomes. Would you build the fence regardless?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. We would want to screen to the best of our ability. If we had simply at the private road entrance, it would allow us to actually swing it north a little quicker. We would probably actually do some birmingham landscaping that would suffice in the same way, perhaps a little more enhanced. But either way, we would screen whether that was a fence or berm and landscaping.
Okay. Council, anything clarifying, or should we go to the staff report? All right. Thank you, Will. I'm sure we'll.
Thank you.
Call you if we need you. Thank you so much. Staff report.
Mayor, members of the council, I also have a PowerPoint presentation to help walk you through a couple of points that we'd like to share with you. So just as a quick review, as Mr. Lottner mentioned, it is a 42-town home unit, owner-occupied project. It is, they are requesting an RM 6.5 zoning. That zoning district does allow by right 6.7 units per acre. The development before you this evening proposes 6.8 units per acre. Aspire, Aspire Comprehensive Plan was adopted by the city in 2019. As a part of preparing that document, the city took a look at all of the developable properties left in the community that were vacant and identified those as infill sites. As you are well aware, the comp plan is the city's blueprint for a lot of different topics over the course of a 20-year timeframe, whether that's traffic, park and recreation, land use, housing. All of those topics are covered in the comprehensive plan, and it sets forward goals and policies for the long term. As a part of identifying these infill sites, the intention was to be able to communicate to the elected officials as well as to residents of the community where they might expect to see development occur in the near future. As you can see on this slide, the subject property is identified just south of Pioneer Trail. In total, there were 19 infill development sites identified. Eight of those either have already had developments approved, are currently in process, or in the case of two other properties, they're engaged in preliminary conversation. So what that tells us is in the short time since the comp plan was adopted, because Eden Prairie is a community of choice, we continue to see a lot of development requests, and more than half of these infill properties have already moved forward through the development process. From a land use standpoint, the property in question, I'm identifying, showing it here with my mouse, is in this location. It's a little bit of that brighter yellow color. That indicates that it's guided for medium-density residential. As you can see, there are other medium-density residentially-guided properties surrounding it, as well as the more pale yellow color that is the single-family or low-density guiding to the east of that property. So with a medium-density guiding, the property can anticipate development anywhere from five to 14 units per acre. The city has two zoning districts that would allow for development within that density range. The RM 6.5, which is what the applicant is requesting this evening, which has a maximum density of 6.7 units per acre, or the RM 2.5 is another zoning district choice which would allow up to 17.4 units per acre. The comp plan identifies in its text that densities that are consistent with the comprehensive plan but might exceed what the zoning district allows, so that 6.7 limit or the 17.4 limit can be approved through a PUD process so long as they further other policies or goals of the comprehensive plan. In this version of the comp plan, cert, specific goals that the city has identified include providing a variety of housing types that provide, for lifecycle housing opportunities in order to allow options for residents of all demographics or all age groups to be able to find housing within our city, as well as varying affordability levels and housing types that might be underrepresented. Just for context for you, Aspire guides 7% of the properties in Eden Prairie for medium-density residential. That is about 1,250 acres. 12 of those acres, or less than 1%, are currently undeveloped, and that 12 acres includes the six that is before you this evening. From a kind of historical standpoint of townhome development in Eden Prairie and adjacent development, from 1994 to 2004, 32 townhome projects were approved. However, since 2007, only one townhouse project has been approved. So 10 units since 2007. As you can see on the graphic, there are other adjacent developments that are identified along with the density levels that were developed with those projects. So immediately to the south of the development site, it is a project that is at 4.3 units per acre. Just to the south of that is another townhouse project that is three units per acre. But across Dell, you've got two townhome projects, one at 8.2 and one at nine units per acre. So taking a look at all of those townhome projects that were approved in the late 90s to early 2000s, the average density of those projects was around 6.12 units per acre. Seven of those projects had densities that exceeded the 6.8 that's being proposed this evening, and those that were above the 6.8 ranged anywhere from 7.5 to 17.7 units per acre. So just providing some historical context. This graph also demonstrates what I was discussing earlier with regard to the number of townhome units compared to apartment and single-family units that have been constructed since 2007. So the green section of the pie chart indicates apartment. So the green section of the pie chart indicates apartment buildings permitted since 2007 compared to the blue, single-family. And that purple segment indicates townhouses. From an open space standpoint, Mr. Lauter mentioned that the city does have usable open space requirements. That is, 150 square feet per unit is required by city code. As a part of that, city staff always asks the developer to identify those areas that would meet the requirements for the usable open space. So this is the graphic that Pulte has provided. Based on that calculation, 6,300 square feet of open space would be required. The graphic indicates in a pink color the trail connection up to Pioneer and also some group usable open space. I'm going to call it along the west property, excuse me, east property line, where they could have some programmed activities, such as a fire pit or other types of gathering space. As you can see from the graphic, there are other unprogrammed open space areas where residents of the neighborhood could interact or enjoy passive or active recreation opportunities on the site. Before we transition to Public Works Director's portion, any questions for me?
Counsel? Not right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Kay, City Council, I'll spend the next few minutes just talking about transportation, traffic, and really Valley Road, because that's much of the conversation that we've had to date has been revolving around. So Valley Road is currently being proposed, as you see here in yellow, a standard city-section street with a sidewalk on the north side, connecting to where Valley Road currently deadends all the way over to Dell Road. And maybe to just describe the surrounding transportation system, you have Pioneer Trail on the north, Tannupan County Highway. It is actually a minor arterial. It's a reliever, reliever for Highway 212. So it functions as that reliever arterial. When you see congestion on 212, they encourage people to drop down Pioneer Trail and use that. We also have Dell Road that runs north-south. That is a city road. It is a collector. It has a speed limit of 30 miles per hour. And pretty consistently, it's had about 3,000 vehicles per day, as we've counted it over the years. As opposed to Pioneer Trail has a little bit higher speed, 45 miles per hour. Speed's probably a little bit higher than that, but that's the posted speed. And then a volume of currently in 2021, when it's counted, 7,000. But I think we've seen that jump as high as 8,000-plus. And then there's Valley Road. Valley Road always has been, always will be a local road. It will not be a collector. It'll always be a local residential road under any scenario that's proposed. Speed limit of all of our local roads are 30 miles per hour. And then the volume, and it really depends where you're talking along Valley Road. So I've got a range here of 500 on the high end, and that's with the assumption that the Kinsley Development is approved, as proposed. So you would expect to see 500 vehicles per day over here at Dell Road, because most of the traffic would be coming out towards Dell Road. But now, if the connection is made, I would expect to see about 200, 250 vehicles per day closer to the stop sign here at Cedar Forest Road. So it really depends where, within that section of Valley Road, what the volumes on a daily basis would be, 250 to 500. So just laying the groundwork for the system there. The next thing I wanted to mention, and our community development director talked about ASPIRE, our 2040 comp plan. And when it comes to transportation, we also have that long-range plan. And this is one of those roads that has never been connected, but we've always assumed that at some point in time it would when those infill developments happen. And we have a handful of them across the city. And I will say, these are the most difficult roads to get built. They're always, there's a lot of controversy around them because it's a change, and I understand that. But we do have a handful of these across the city where it's that little gap that has not been made yet, waiting for the development to come. But a lot of the master planning has been done through past Ghost Plans, ASPIRE, and it's been in a number of past transportation plans as well. I also want to mention that when we talk about Valley Road connection and who benefits, it's really the people that are going north on whether it's Braxton, Cedar Forest Road, trying to make a left turn. If you're trying to make a right turn, that's a pretty simple move. You don't have a lot of interference from Pioneer Trail traffic. You can find a gap, judge it, make your movement. But northbound left is a little bit more difficult for those people that are trying to get maybe to Highway 212 off Dell Road to get onto the freeway system. Maybe they're heading out to Carver, or maybe they're dropping south on Dell Road to head towards Shakopee. So those people that are making that movement benefit most from the connection, because now they can go out to Valley Road, get on Dell, either make an easy right turn and go north, or make a much easier left turn under slower speeds, better sightlines, and much less traffic. So when we talk about who benefits, that's who we see as the primary benefactors. And a lot of those are the people that currently live in the single-family development, who are making that movement today. They would be able to then go out to Dell Road and access, whether it's 212, Carver County, or south to Shakopee in a much more easier fashion. And then I also want to reiterate, Valley Road, under all situations, does not change its designation, doesn't become a collector, an arterial, or anything like that. It always stays a local road. And then a little bit of discussion on the Heritage Development from 2001. And so it's a development to the south that was approved. And as that planning process went through, there was the Ghost Plan, the contemplation that Valley Road would be connected. And I also wanted to point out the proximity of many of the homes to existing roadway. And I've highlighted here in this green, this aqua, these would be the homes that would now have a frontage or their backyard would abut the new Valley Road. And then I've also highlighted and read some of the other roads that currently exist. And I just wanted to highlight the proximity to either Dell Road or to Valley Road. So when you look at these newer homes in the Heritage Development and Valley Road, they range anywhere from 40 to 45 foot from the curb of the new road. So that would be the distance from the back of the home to the road. And when you take a look at on Dell Road, the ranges that we have here are anywhere from 35 feet, in some cases, to 45 feet. So similar proximity to a higher-volume road, a little bit more traffic. But what we're seeing on Valley Road doesn't really distinguish itself from many of the other homes that are fronting other roads in the neighborhood. And then to take a specific look at the new traffic that would be generated from Kinsley Development, and then also how it might change existing traffic patterns in the single-family residential homes that currently exist to the east. When we look simply at Kinsley Traffic, they're projecting about 283 vehicles per day will now come down to Valley Road. And the majority will head towards the west to go to Dell Road. We're predicting 15 vehicles per hour, or 15 vehicles per hour in the AM peak would head towards Dell. Another two vehicles per hour would head toward the east and maybe look at going up Cedar or Braxton. In the PM, fairly similar. We still have 21 vehicles per hour in the peak hour coming in and out of the neighborhood. The vast majority accessing from the Dell side versus the Cedar Forest side. Now, when you take a look at the existing neighborhood traffic and what is being predicted for use of Valley Road, it's essentially all those people that are, or most of them, that are doing the left turn at Cedar Forest and some that are doing it at Braxton as well. They would now go out to Dell Road, and it would be 19 vehicles per hour in the morning, and we're predicting 24 vehicles per hour in the afternoon. So those are the types of volumes that we're talking on a peak hour basis. And then looking at the different types of traffic that would be generated for different types of densities, I've got a chart here that lists, the, the top is Pulte as proposed tonight, density of 6.8 units per acre, 42 units. That would generate 283 trips per day, vehicles per day. And then we break it down into PM peak, you've got 17 in the AM, 21 in the PM. Now you take a look at Heritage Village, and they're 4.3 units per acre, 26 units that exist there. Their weekday average daily traffic is 175, so less because of less density. AM and PM peak is 10 and 13. And then the last example I have there is if Pulte were to do single-family housing at 3.5 units per acre, they could fit 21 units in there. That would generate an average weekday traffic of 20 vehicles over the course of the 24 hours. But the PM peak and AM peak are pretty similar to what is under the situation being proposed. And the reason for that is the type of housing that Pulte is proposing, you see more seniors, you see younger families that maybe don't have adult-driving children, that are going to school, adult children living at home that may have jobs. So the number of trips throughout the day is higher, but the PM peak, where we tend to have the congestion, is about the same as a single-family. And it's because of the type of residents that are living in those units. And I just wanted to point that distinction out. Okay, the other thing that we did is we took a look at the nearby intersections to compare what existing and proposed level of service and delay would be. And so when we first take a look at Cedar Forest and Pioneer, we have an existing AM peak level of service of B. And the existing AM delay is 11.2 seconds per vehicle. Now, under the proposed scenario, with Kinsley being developed, Valley Road being connected, it stays pretty much the same. It's a level of service B, which is very good. And the proposed delay drops to 10.4 seconds. And again, that's reflecting that there are more, there's traffic actually decreasing on Cedar Forest because they're going over to Valley. So you're seeing a reduction in the delay for that intersection. Now, Valley Road and Dell Road, there's actually, it's Weedman Way on the other side of the road. So, but at that intersection, it's currently a level of service A. It's, it's excellent. The existing delay is nine seconds per vehicle. And with the connection, it stays at an A, and delay goes up slightly with the traffic that's being added from the Kinsley, so 9.3. So it's pretty much no change. Now, if you take a look at the intersection, the signalized intersection of Dell and Pioneer, currently operates in the AM peak at a level of service C, 20.9 seconds, which is almost a B. Anything under 20 is a B, so it's, it's a very good C. With the added traffic, it's virtually no change because it's such a small increase in traffic compared to the high volume of traffic that already goes through there. And I should point out that I'm talking AM, AM peak level of service, because AM peak is kind of the worst-case scenario. All the PM peaks are much better than the AM, well, not much better. They're better than the AM. So that's why I'm just highlighting the AM, because it is a worst-case scenario. So in reviewing all that, staff believes this is a safe and efficient connection. The traffic volumes are typical of what you would see in really any residential neighborhood. We're not seeing anything that is pointing to higher levels of traffic than we would expect on any other residential neighborhood. Again, delays are low, level of service is high at all the intersections that were evaluated. And there is less traffic on Cedar Forest. There will be fewer vehicles that use that, if this is approved, than do today. But that traffic is really moving over to Valley Drive. But we understand it is a change, and we don't discount that. So having said that, I have four slides left. And what I've done here is I've laid out four possible alternatives for the city council to consider. The first alternative is the one that staff has recommended, which is the connection of Valley Road to Dell Road and building it as a city-standard, typical roadway section with the sidewalk on the north side of the road. However, if the council wanted to look at other options, another one could be essentially all of the right-of-way is dedicated, like it was in, in option number one. But the road, Valley Road, would only be constructed from Dell Road to the private drive that serves all of the new homes in the Kinsley. The rest would still be right-of-way, but it would not be a road that is built. And it would preserve the ability in the future, maybe 10, 20, 30 years from now, when we do see a need, when more homes are built in Carver, the traffic on Pioneer becomes more congested, Highway 212 starts to see a lot of people dropping down on the Pioneer Trail as a primary route, that in that 10 to 20, 30 years, should the council decide that maybe it's time to look at building that roadway, we would have the ability because the right-of-way is there. And if that were to happen, there would be an open forum. There would be due process. There would be a mechanism for the public to weigh in, much like they are tonight. So this would simply allow that to happen in the future, if the council were to choose. Now, the third option, and I'm kind of, kind of flipped back between two and three just so you can see the difference, because it's rather subtle. But in this option, the right-of-way is still dedicated. The sidewalk is still connected. But instead of a standard city-width roadway, which is a little bit bigger than we allow private roadways to be built, they could build a private roadway. So it'd be entirely private from Dell Road all the way through the neighborhood. But the dedicate would, the right-of-way would still be dedicated. That would allow perhaps more landscaping, birmingham fencing, whatever type of shielding or buffer that there might be a desire for, because there's less roadway width there and more green space. So that was option three. And then alternative four is, don't dedicate any right-of-way. Don't build a public street. Everything is private, and there would be no opportunity for a future roadway connection. But there would still be building the sidewalk, because I think that there is a desire to have that sidewalk, pedestrian, bicycle connection. So those are the, the four options that I laid out. And if there are any questions, I would, of course, be willing to answer those.
I have a quick question. Could you go back to two and three again? Okay. So the, go back to two. What is the difference, the two, the, the road is wide?
Two is a, is a standard city-width roadway. We require extra-wide roadways for maintenance purposes, our big plow trucks, making sure if there's a parked car, you can drive around it. So we, our, our expectations as a city standard has a larger width than a private roadway. So under alternative three, there is no Valley Road. It becomes whatever private drive.
Gotcha.
But it's a narrower roadway, which again would allow for trees, birmingham, you know, maybe a little bit of an opportunity, not a lot, but there's a little bit of an opportunity.
Would alternative two still be considered a private drive, then?
Well, I, I think that I'd like to talk to the developer about that. I, I think through the development agreement, we would have them maintain the roadway because it's, you know, solely serving that private road. But if it needed to be repaved, milled and overlaid, I think that's something that we would take on for the Valley Drive. But the annual winter maintenance is what I would like the developer to manage. Because without a proper turnaround, it's hard for our vehicles to actually manage those roadways, and this doesn't provide that.
I have a question. So in this scenario, Robert, in any of these scenarios that the developer was talking about building a wall there for, for light and shade and so on, you still consider that some, some form of? Fence, a large fence?
Yes, under, under any of these four scenarios, a fence could go in.
So that will help the neighboring, the townhomes, actually, they won't get the light come from the, the new development as well?
Yes, that is correct.
And, and do you know how high that fence could be to block the light?
Six, six, six feet.
Seven, seven feet, I'm hearing.
Okay, that's enough to block the light?
Yes.
Second floor, okay. So where is the light come from? Okay, thanks. So I'm just wondering where the lights are come from?
It's car lights. I believe there's trees that are being planted and then the fence. So between the trees and the fencing.
So they're not, so the residents are not worried about second-floor bedroom lights coming, hitting them, right? I'm assuming.
I believe the developers proposed trees and fencing to help shield that lighting. And under all of these scenarios, that could be accomplished.
Still accomplish, okay. And I have one more scenario, your fourth scenario. Is it possible to have another scenario that that space is allocated, that extra connecting, but not a road, but more like a road, a walkway, so the residents can walk, right? And in the future time, that is still city has the right to build that road connecting, because we don't know what could happen in terms of traffic. Maybe even the residents come back and say, there's too much traffic. We want to connect that, that maybe helped them. So we could do that as well, right? That'd be a fifth option?
You're saying leave a trail in there?
Leave, leave it as a trail, walking trail.
There's a sidewalk right now.
There's a sidewalk.
In alternative two and three.
So make it the whole full flood road width, right? And like, so people can walk and, and, you know, walk their dogs and kids and so on.
So there is a sidewalk now?
Okay.
I mean, propose for alternative two and three.
I was wondering, sidewalk is just too narrow.
Oh, you're just saying like, maybe like an eight-foot bike trail or something?
Yeah, 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 exactly.
We can talk about, I mean, that's certainly an alternative that we could, I don't know if we need another alternative, but we could, we could decide in alternative two or three, if the sidewalk should be of, what is it, a five-foot, four-foot sidewalk or verse an eight-foot asphalt, macadam surface bike trail or something?
Okay. Thank you, Robert.
Anything else from either one of you? Of course, we'll have lots of opportunity to talk and share once we get, you know, into the evening and the... into the evening and the, and we close the public hearing later on down the way. But anything at this point of Robert specifically, or the proponent? Okay.
One, one more question for Robert. Robert, this traffic study that you have done, like you, you highlighted here, similar amount of traffic, do we have similar neighborhood in Eden Prairie? And we are, are we seeing any problem? Are we seeing any congestion? So I'm trying to compare the 20 unit, 20 vehicle per hour in the morning or whatever it is, the number compared to another neighborhood, similar neighborhood. And is it, or higher, right? And do we see any kind of more accidents or any, any indication?
No, we're not seeing anything unusual. The volume of traffic for the number of homes falls in line with what we would expect to see anywhere. We have a number of roadways, residential roadways, local roadways, cascade, Boulder Point Road would be a couple of prime ones that have much more traffic on them than Valley Road ever would. So we're not seeing volumes that are worrisome to us. They're very typical of residential roadways.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I think I need to have some sort of a, what is it, metaphorical, rhetorical, something conversation with all of you, meaning only one sided for a moment here, but I want to see you nod or something. So many of you know that we had a meeting back on May 4th, 2021, that made the papers and we had 82 people signed up to speak. 65 of them did not live in Eden Prairie. We went on until 2 o'clock in the morning. I started doing the math. If we gave each one five minutes, we'd be there till 5 o'clock in the, okay. So you get it that as a mayor, I get this prerogative to try to figure out, how do we give everyone, whatever that means, everyone, you can have a representative spokesperson, but how do we hear from you and at the same time not be here till 2 o'clock in the morning, right? So 15 of you signed up. I understand from, you know, watching the planning commission, also from some calls in, that one of you has a 30 minute presentation, another has a 15 or 20. But let me, let me just add this to you and not in any way cutting off your ability to talk to us, just know, we've read every one of your emails. And, and by the way, thank you. I mean, you really, you're not sending form letters and I'm very impressed. I mean, I think there were 25 or so of you that wrote your heart out and it was very good and we read them all. I tried to just answer back, thank you, just to let you know I read them. But I didn't write the link that you wrote to me. And, and then we watched the planning commission, Lisa twice.
Me too.
And Kathy twice.
I've been met before.
I'm only once. And we've chatted with some of you. I've had coffee with a couple of you. We've read every document that's come before us. I'm not saying we came in with our mind made up because that's not the way it works, but we come in with 95% of it, otherwise we wouldn't be doing our due diligence. I mean, we really, and I've been at this 27 years, I've had 250, I don't know, 200 of these. And so, you know, I kind of, I get how they work and I, and, and the other thing at a really broad, big picture is all five of us really, I, I'm so impressed with this council, but they really listen well. They try to make decisions for the good of the entire city all the time. It's just, you have a really hardworking council. So with all that in mind, here's my suggestion. If, if someone speaks and you have nothing new to add to that, it's not that we don't care about your feelings. I do, I'll meet you for coffee and you can share your feelings. But tonight, we really need to learn some new perspective that maybe, I doubt it, not, not, not to diminish anything you're going to say, but maybe there's something new. But so I'm wondering if, I know Don Patterson, who is Don Patterson? I, okay, where?
Apple seats.
Okay. I know that Don, are you the one with the presentation?
I have, I have, I have a presentation. It's not 30 minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, here's my suggestion with your approval. And I realize there's a couple of neighborhood perspectives, you know, that need to be represented and spoken to as well. But I would suggest Don come forward first. And is there anyone else with a presentation that might be representative of a lot of you? No, yeah, okay, what, you actually have a, a flash drive? Is it, is it tight and short? Okay. All right. So why don't we, and what's your name?
Heidi Larson.
Okay. I know you signed up and I'm not, I mean, I'm not going to cut you off if you want to come up and for 10 seconds say, I hate this project, I just need you to know that and sit down. We'll, we'll hear that. But I think Don and Heidi, and then if there's nothing new that you would have to add, I would just really highly suggest, you know, whatever, making your comments really shorter or maybe not speaking. But again, I want to be fair to you. I don't want you walking out feeling like, you know, we didn't listen, we ripped you off, we weren't interested, because we are. Truly, truly, it's not that we're not going to learn anything from you because I, I want to hear the energy and the perspective. Someone like Don could stand up and say, who's here, you know, that, that feels like I do? And we can all stand up and, you know, I can, we can get that sense. So Don, why don't you come forward?
Guys, don't worry. This is the presentation. This is just extra.
All right.
Are we putting something up on the screen? Thank you.
Are you Sarah?
I'm Sarah, hi.
So Don, name, address, and if you want to have people stand, whoever, they clap for you, so you have a lot of support, but.
We, we've been here before.
Okay. Go ahead, name and address.
I'm Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Don Patterson. I live with my wife Joan at 17244 Valley Road. All right. But before I, before I start, I just, I want to say one thing, I do want to say one thing very important. I want to thank, I want to thank you guys for coming out and actually looking at our development here today. I, I think it's really important for all of Eden Prairie to know, you care. And I, and I don't know that we always express that, especially if there's something a little contentious. So with that, on, on behalf of all the residents that I represent, thank you for going that extra mile. Now, I'm going to try to convince you about our side, okay? All right, with that, ta-da, okay. So as you know, we did the planning commission and we made news, right? So we got into the Eden Prairie newsletter and there was the article here, Town Homes Endorsed Over Neighbors' Objections. Why is this important? It's, it's important because, well, first off, Mark Weber did a fantastic job of just reporting the facts, telling what had happened and being very accurate. Cable news could learn something from Mark Weber, okay? That said though, the, the actual headline though, Town Homes Endorsed Over Neighbors' Objections, I want, I want everyone to understand, we are not objecting to townhomes, okay? That is not what's at bay here. Townhomes are fantastic. Many of us live in townhomes. We need townhomes in this city and we understand that. What we're objecting to is actually the density, or more practically, the way we look at it, is just how many homes are coming in on top of us, especially when on top of us comes another road that disrupts something that's been left closed for not one, not five, not 10, but 20 years. My wife and I are actually original builders. We built in 2003, we moved in in 2004, we have been here for 20 years, we're 30 year residents of Eden Prairie. We're very happy with not only our home, we love our neighborhood, we love our neighbors. And, and if there's one thing you learn in a time like this, is who are the people that are with you? And I tell you what, I, I got the best. So, and with that, we're not here to attack, we're not here to, to make anything difficult for anybody, but, but we're asking to get our voice heard. And, and I do think that we have some solutions. I, I'm a manager and I always tell my people, you know, don't come to me with a problem, come to me with a solution. And by the time we get to the end, I hope we can have that because I know that there's compromise in this. So if we could move on to the slides, that would be super next. Sarah, this is really cool. I had to use the clicker last time. I had to use the clicker last time. Okay. All right. Neighborhood perspective. I'm here all week, guys. So neighborhood perspective, you guys have seen this a million times, but you've always seen it from somebody else's side, okay? So our neighborhood perspective, there you see our quiet little townhome neighborhood to the south, you see our quiet single family homes, we were built circa 2002 to 2004. We are 20 years in. Many of us are original owners. The cul-de-sac to the north and the cul-de-sac to the south on Preston is basically our actual neighborhood. And then to, quite frankly, as you know, Valley Road has ended in the dead end, which is really like a, I guess you would call it a impromptu cul-de-sac on the west side. We have quiet streets, we have a very quiet neighborhood, we are easily accessible from the other roads that come into our area, and we are more than adequately serviced by the city. And it's been this way for 20 years and we love it this way. We would not be here tonight if this wasn't so important to us. And I understand what's important to everybody. And Mr. Mayor, I really do take to, to heart the comment that you have to watch out for the city, but we're a part of that city. So again, we'll just move forward here and keep hitting on some points so we can get you guys home on time. So throughout this whole process, from the, from the Pulte presentation that started back in May? Have we been living this four months now? Okay, May. The residents presented concerns, the high number of units that were proposed on the parcel. You may wonder why we think it's high, okay? When we bought our homes, we bought our homes from Scott Carlston, nice guy, loved to work with him, did a great job. And he told us, he said, you know, the road's going to open up, there's going to be townhomes like the ones to the south. Okay, we get it. But you know, all right, we're still buying because we love this place. Up until 2017, when my friend Wolfgang called because he was interested in the parcel from the city, he was told, townhomes just like the ones that you're living in. Basically that 4.3 density. We found out that this is closer to seven at that meeting. And it's the first time we ever heard about it. It was, there was no engagement. No one had gotten ahold of us before. No one asked our input prior. Pulte pulled us together, as I'm sure is a prefunctory deal that has to be done for city, city reasons. They got a great room for us over in the community center and then just basically presented this plan. Oops, pardon me, got to go back here. They presented us with, how do I, I'm Sarah, I'm having technical difficulties. There we go. They put us right onto that original plan. So with that, what we said is there was too many units, we had an issue with the lack of transition because there's not a lot of space because there's so much on it. And of course, the need to open at Valley Road got us going. So the residents asked for a reduction in total units to provide relief from the crowding of existing homes. And there are a couple of key points where these homes are truly crowding our neighborhoods. It's not everywhere, but there are some real stress points. We're looking for better transition and again, we want to stop the completion of Valley Road through to Dell. So long story short, this is what we've been asking for, and we have been asking for it since talking with Pulte, all through the planning process, to the actual planning commission meeting, and then here again tonight. These are the same three points every time. We have not changed. And I do believe you guys know there's been a lot of vocal conversation about it. I, I truly hope respectful. So you can imagine, we walked out of that meeting and thought, well, you know, what, what are these homes really going to look like? Let's go look for them. We've been told that they're in Brooklyn Park. If you Google Pulte Freedom Series Homes, there's like 26 developments around the entire metropolitan area. They're everywhere. Interestingly, what no one ever really mentioned was that there's one right in Chanhassen. All we have to do is just buzz down 212 to Great Plains Boulevard. And so if you go there, you'll see there is the Pulte Freedom Homes to the, to the left of what would be, pardon me, Great Plains Boulevard. You can see 212 down at the bottom. This is the corner 212. It's an island community. See how roads actually encircle it? It's adjacent to the Gateway Parking Building. But you know, while we went and found this, I, I just happened to find the Chanhassen staff report, all 42 pages of it. Lot of interesting things in here. There's, oh, actually, you know what, I, there's kinds of, there's renderings of the, of the different stuff. It's a staff report, I get it. But one of the things that I think is really important to mention is that they come right on out and they call it, this, this type of urban housing is typically located closer to the right of way to provide an urban edge to the public realm. That's the main reason for the variation of, or asking for the variance of moving closer to the roads is to maintain the urban edge. Now, in the development, I took a few pictures. One of the, one of the concerns, sorry about that, one of the concerns was parking. And as you can see from the picture, parking ends up being in the driveways. I took a, there's, since there's no back elevation in the staff report anywhere, I took a picture so you could see that. Now, that would be running along Pioneer Road and double because there's 12 units right in a row on Pioneer Road. So that's, that's what you see from the back. Interestingly, you'll notice in this, this is a 10 acre parcel. And because it's against all of these roads that have larger setbacks, there's much more green area, even though right behind that green area is a road or a freeway or something like that, there is actually that freedom of space that unfortunately just is not showing up in the development we're talking about. Our, our six acre parcel that, that we're looking at here is really very landlocked. It's not so, if you put roads all the way around it, maybe that would be one thing. It would provide some transition and that barrier, but it's not. What it, what actually, it's, it's bordered by, uh, single family homes, our friends in the towns homes to the south, and it's even kind of trapped in based on that outlot, uh, which is by the way, probably one of the most beautiful outlots in all of Eden Prairie with the established pine trees and stuff. But it's, it is just really trapped in there and it gets really, really tight. So when you look at that, it's 42 townhomes after a 20 year expectation of only 20 to 24. The staff report was, I think, a little, you know what, the staff report had a, had a section in it that showed all the local townhomes. And basically, it compared them to all these townhomes. It disregarded that there was planning done by the planning commission 20 years ago. This is part of the 20 year ago transitional plan. The units that were eight and 10 that staff actually reported, yes, they are on the west side of Dell. Dell becomes that transition and buffer. It was, it was done on purpose from planning back then. Why, why can I say that? Because the townhome developments that are on the east side of Dell are not eight and 10, they're not six, they're three units per acre and 4.3 units per acre. And they bought up next to single family homes at 2.5 per acre. So this comparison chart that staff presented to the planning commission, I, I think was a little misleading because what it didn't show really is what the adjacent units were. It didn't even list the single family homes. So this isn't comparing it to units of eight and 10 density and saying, it's okay, it's the same. We need to compare this to, to developments that are of three and 4.3 and say it's different. The proposed density of the east of Dell is just not in keeping. This proposed density for this east of Dell lot is just not in keeping with what our original planning was from 20 years ago. And it actually, it ends up crowding the single family homes. I, I wish I could run up there and just point, but you can see it, if you go up from Valley Road to where it makes sort of that, that, the part of the L there, it's, it's in our neighbor's backyard, okay? And there's a reason it's there that we're going to get to. But, but this is, this is where actually this is a stickler plan. And putting 42 units on it is making that happen for our neighbors. I don't know that that's fair for them. Similarly, our friends in the townhome south, well, the whole road's, you know, there's Valley Road there, but let's, let's get past Valley Road and realize too, that if there's a possibility of, of, of making a compromise on the road, those bottom units, they're forcing that road down into our townhome friends backyards. And again, that's something that really needs to be looked at. This block style positioning, you know, is that in keeping with the rest of our, you've seen the pictures of our neighborhoods out there. It's very, very worrisome. The clearing of the existing trees, there are heritage trees out there and, you know, I don't know the definition of heritage trees, but they're big, okay? You get on up over closer, especially, again, the, the, the blockage for those homes that are right at that corner up there as you get closer to Pioneer, those trees are the cover for those people. They moved in with the idea that they were going to have a very peaceful, quiet area and that's going to be pulled out right on top of them now. that's gonna be pulled out right on top of them now. And you know what, the regrading that's gonna go on, that's gonna exasperate it, because it's gonna lift that whole lot up, and if you see that retaining wall, that means that two-story townhome is going to tower over those houses. All right. Road concern. Remember, this is a two-pronged deal here. We've got both the problems with the density, but we've got problems with the road concern. So, again, these heritage neighborhoods have matured over 20 years without the road. I think that's an important word. It's, they have matured. We've grown up together. The road hasn't been through. When we first moved in, we anticipated it happening in one to five years. It didn't, because on the other side was a horse farm. We herded the horses. There were apple orchards. We were waiting for that. Somewhere around 10 years passed, nothing had happened. The sign that used to say, "Call the city with what's happening," it fell off, okay? And like I mentioned, I did not do it, okay? It just, it truly just went away and it got replaced with something different. So, you know, eventually, you just sort of not think about it anymore, because you grow comfortable. And we have grown very comfortable with the way that it is right now. Then when we start to talk to the city, though, here comes the rub. Why do we need this road? Well, it started out that it's a collector road. We've beaten this to death, right? It can't be a collector road. Two years ago, just east of Braxton, they put a cul-de-sac there. It's never gonna link up with anything. That's not the, it's not how that neighborhood works. We're in the southwest corner. Riley Creek is our bottom definer. It's a different, it's a different path out there. So the collector road's no big deal. Well, then it became, well, this will get you better EMS service. Your fire trucks will get there faster. Well, three of the four fire stations that serve Eden Prairie are east of us. Who's coming up with this, right? And then the fourth one is only a mile and a half as way, away as is, but you know what, it's also, it's only part-time staffed. Even though it's a mile and a half away, it might not even be the station that comes to help us on Preston Road here or on Valley Road. It most likely is coming from the east. I will tell you, my house got hit by lightning. I called up, dialed 911. My house got hit by lightning. Everything is fine, nothing is burning. You know, could you send a squad just to have some people look at it and make sure we're all okay? No problem. Boom. Two minutes later, nine units have shown up in the neighborhood. That's, by the way, while I'm saying this in a joke, that is the wonderful nature of the response of Eden Prairie Emergency Services. Truly, nine units were there. All the fire people had to do is just go check, and a lot of them were chatting with me. A couple said, "We had a nice house, that was nice." But, you know, that's what ended up happening. And that's, and that, again, is just the wonderful part of Eden Prairie that you can imagine we don't want disrupted. So I think we've all figured out there's really not a lot better service out of the emergency. Now it's an, so then it changed to, well, it's gonna help with your safety. And you know, the thing with that is, it's just, it sort of gets me, is the helping with the safety is a bit of a problem, because first off, from the city, we received the data, the actual crash data over the last 10 years. And in essence, the number of accidents in the last 10 years that have happened along Pioneer is about the same as the number of accidents that have happened at the controlled intersection of Dell and Pioneer. In fact, actually, the controlled intersection has an additional accident. The controlled intersection at Pioneer and Eden Prairie, as you can imagine, is even higher on its number of accidents. But the point being is, as a controlled intersection, is not a guarantee of safety, especially when you're at such low levels of actual accidents happening. And the fact is, is that we can't stop the reckless driver who's going to do things anyway. So, but what got missed, what actually got missed is, is we feel this does create a dangerous shortcut, and I'm gonna be honest, I'm a little frustrated with the city because I think that it has been given short shrift. And for all the traffic studies, we are all drivers. We have all gone behind cars, and we know that we will look for the shortest or the fastest route to get to where we want to go, especially when we're behind. And you know what, if I can dodge a backed-up intersection at Pioneer and Dell and make a quick shortcut to come down Cedar Forest Road and then across Valley, I'm gonna do it. Or if I can come out of, if I can come out of a new development, or if I can come from south of Dell and not have to hit a blockage there at that light, I can take a quick right and I can zip through, and in zipping through, I will crash through a bus stop. And on top of that Cedar Forest Road, as I've pointed out before, is a legacy road, and it has no sidewalks on either side. In that picture, that is looking up towards Pioneer, you see the two people walking in the street, you see the cars that are parked in the street. That is how our friends use Cedar Forest Road, because they have no choice. So if we bring, if there is the likelihood of bringing any additional traffic through, it can ultimately adversely impinge on anybody who is walking on that road. And from safety, I'm the safety guy at Myers Printing, and one of the things we know in safety is, is if there's a, if a change creates the possibility of a problem, you don't make that change. You find a different solution. And in this particular case, opening Valley Road could create that change, that creates a bigger problem that I don't think any of us want. I do think it's kind of interesting that in the Kinsley Report from Pulte, they mentioned all exact the same things. They brought up the connection can't happen, they pointed out that there doesn't seem to any real safety thing. Just for a little bit of levity here, I do think it's interesting, I'm gonna read you a quote. Originally, Pulte's site plan for this project assumed no Valley Road connection through the site to Dell. As the applicant, we felt early on that extending this road through to Dell would aggravate existing neighbors in the neighborhoods to the east and south.
Got that right.
How many times, Council, how many times are the residents and the developer united? So we've been able to, we've been able to bring that to, and again, I don't mean to waste your time, but I do want to make the point with the idea that, from the Pulte team, they don't see a value in the road either. The other thing too, is, you know, we sent you guys not one, but two petitions, signed by 70 people out of the single-family homes and, pardon me, exactly, 68 people out of the single-family homes and 52 out of the townhomes, practically 120 people who live there. Not people who look at maps, not people who drove through once, not people who sent out a plan, 120 people who live there every day. Adults have come back and said, "We don't want that road." I think that's a very, very important point, that has to be made multiple times if necessary. So with this, going back and looking at our quiet little neighborhood, I kind of want to talk about something that we brought up on the Chanhassen, the urban edge. So there we are. We're the southwest corner of Eden Prairie. A mile and a half to two miles away from us, Chanhassen goes into farrow fields, corn, two-acre, single-family home parcels. It gets, it gets pretty undeveloped and rural out there pretty quick. So what's urban? Well, as you remember, on the, on that Chanhassen plan, they're on the corner 212 and Great Plains Boulevard. They can walk across, they can walk across the bridge to get to the Quick Stop. Behind the Quick Stop is retail, restaurants. Across the other street is the Park and Ride. There's everything that an urban edge really wants. Public transportation, food, a little bit of entertainment, some shopping, that's what happens. Urban edge on the corner of Pioneer and Dell, there's not even a bus stop there. I mean, this is greater suburbia. I hate to say it, but it's greater suburbia. And actually, you know what? I don't hate to say it. It's a wonderful place. It's a fantastic place to raise our kids, two of them, product of graduates of Eden Prairie High School. They loved it, and you know what? They went to school with a bunch of other kids in our neighborhood. And you know what's starting to happen in our neighborhood? New people are moving in with new kids that do the exact same thing in our quiet neighborhood. That's why we're having this conversation today.
Hey, Don, you're doing really well. You are...
My 30 minutes is up?
Significantly over 30, but again, that's fine if we don't have another 50 people that also want to speak.
It's okay, we don't. And I'm taking that time, and I think they're giving it to me. So...
Keep going.
So let's go with the proposal's impact, and I'm sorry that I lied, I misspoke. Okay. That's all right. So you know what? Look, between the homes of private road, Valley Road, elevation, this development noticeably overwhelms the site and encroaches on the townhomes to the south and the single-family homes to the east. I get it. I don't talk city talk, right? I'm just a layman. What does too dense mean to me? It means just too much. It's encroaching on me. I can feel it, I can sense it, okay? This urban edge, is it really appropriate for our suburban neighborhood? Like I said, even if we have it, the houses, they look fine, that is not the issue here. The issue is, if you're a buyer and you're expecting urban edge, you're gonna be grossly disappointed, because there isn't even a bus stop on the corner there. You're not gonna be able to walk to a restaurant. You're not gonna find anything that the urban edge brings, except higher-density housing, that then you have to drive someplace to get to wherever you want to go. The combined density of the adjacent single-family homes and the townhomes is approximately 3.4 units per acre. This proposal is 6.85. It's 2X. It's full 2X of our average density. You know, again, that is, that's a lot. The most egregious encroachments can be seen on that north side on the single-family homes, and look at how it's crowding the townhomes to the south there. The opening of Valley Road is gonna disrupt the quiet nature of the existing neighborhoods to the east and south. It provides no value to residents or the city. You know what, let's, everything that we're talking about is all conjecture and maybes, and with all due respect, we're guessing on where people are going to drive. Will they take a left or a right? I don't know, you don't know. But what we do know is, is that if we open it on up, we open ourselves up to a potential problem. Again, there's the heritage trees and vegetation that won't be replaced. In the report that was submitted earlier, it was only 136 of 542 caliper inches, we're gonna be replaced. The rest of it is just gonna be paid in a fine in lieu of cash, right? Well, how does that help my neighbors? You know, maybe, I said this at the Planning Commission meeting, maybe if they got the cash so they could plant in their backyards, that might be a reasonable solution. But I think, in reality, though, once those trees are gone, they're gone, and they're gonna be gone. I get that new ones grow, but they're gonna be gone for a long time, and for new people who just moved into our neighborhood, they're not gonna grow fast enough. So what can be done to limit these adverse impacts for the sake of this proposal, especially in its present state? First, Commissioners' comments. Some of them really got it. The density and the road are linked. They are. You know what, it's just that much more on the lot, but I got another plan on that too. Commissioner Chair Andrew Piper, he got that. Part of our job is to listen to the community and react to it. This is right out of the newspaper article, by the way, from Mr. Weber, noting that our neighbors had voiced overwhelming dissatisfaction with the road. John Kirk, he got that. And even Ed Far, who I respect for the idea that he was quite adamant about the road, he did point out, of course, people like cul-de-sacs, they're quiet and they bring more value. They do, you know? I mean, this is our world, you guys. The decisions you make tonight affect all of us. And then there was a couple comments, "I'm leaning towards the residents, but I don't want to vote against staff recommendation." And that's what really brings us here. We had a 3-4 vote, and a couple said, "I don't want to vote against staff recommendation." So, Council, just wait a minute. Hear us out. I'm sorry, a little late on that comment, but just wait a minute. This plan's not ready for primetime, okay? We spent, we spent a solid hour on this, or more, in the Planning Commission, but neither issue of the density of the road was truly resolved. All of the conversation after the fact was about remove or retain the road. It just dominated the discussion. What more dominated the discussion was, how do you do it procedurally? You guys saw it. You saw multiple Commissioners asking, "How do we do this procedurally?" There was no real discussion or individual vote regarding the building code waivers requested and that requested or needed. And this is really important, rubber hits the road here. Without waiving those building codes, this 42 groups of homes cannot go on that lot. It's impossible. We've waived the limitations that stop that kind of thing. The maximum gross density, you know, here's where it's hard for us. It was 6.5. That's what the R6.5, ah, you know, 6.5 units per acre. Well, you know what, it can go up to 6.7, most likely for roundoff error and trying to make sure that something doesn't lift out. Give the builder a break. Well, then it goes to 6.85. 6.7's not good enough? 6.5's not good enough when the adjacent parcels are 4.3 and 2.5?
Don, you're doing great, but get to the point. I mean, we know, we've seen all, I just gotta...
I have a solution.
They've seen it three times.
Okay, all right.
Your presentation's good, by the way, really good.
Oh, thank you.
We have seen it.
Okay, let me get to this.
Perfect, thank you so much. You're doing well.
I will, I will say this, Mr. Mayor. You gotta remember, the decision that gets made tonight, we live with forever.
We... I just want to...
I understand.
I just want to say one, I've gotta respond to that. Thank you so much.
You got it, you got it.
I've made 250, right, decisions on proposal projects that people have lived with forever. And in 27 years, I've never, I'm not exaggerating, had a group come back and say, "You made a bad decision." They may not have agreed with it. They never came back once it was built, once they got used to it, once the cars, so I understand completely, you live with this forever. We get that. We really do. We live in your community. We have development all around us. We will drive your road, so you, yeah, I just have to respond to that. You don't have to tell us that we're not, that we need to be sensitive or empathetic to, because we are, and we know that you'll live with it. This is why it's so important to us to do this right.
And we are, and we are in full agreement on that.
Thank you so much. If you, yeah, if you would wrap this up, that would be great.
But I'm so close.
I believe you, you're doing great.
So what we are asking is...
Don, you can have my time.
Send this proposal back to Planning. I don't know whether you're really voting on it or not. I don't know the, I don't know the protocols of night. But like I said, this is not ready for primetime, okay? Again, those four waivers, think of the minimum lot depth. The minimum lot depth is dropping from 100 feet to approximately to 81 feet on average. That means every home being built is 18 feet, 19 feet closer to Pioneer than otherwise it would be. Do we want that? If Pulte would have taken out one home, they wouldn't have made staff and the Planning Commission have to get a waiver for maximum density. Or if they would have taken out one home, they wouldn't have had to have asked for a setback variance, but they wouldn't. Now, with that, reduce the overall unit density more consistent with the original. You guys get what the density currently is, so we don't have to go there. I will point out, though, remember, the medium density that we have been moved up to is still five units per acre. We can achieve the comprehensive plan at five units per acre. Doesn't have to be seven. It could be five and still meet the needs of the comprehensive plan. What we'd like to have also is to remove the extension of Valley Road from this development permanently. Let's just get that off of the books. This development can access via Dell. We know that the road's not bringing any real value. Most importantly, fix the most egregious encroachments. The townhomes, you know what, units one and four, they're pushing. They're pushing in on those townhomes. Our neighbors to the south need your help with relief. Our neighbors to the south need your help with relief. The single-family homes around that units 27 to 30 where the retaining wall is, they're towering over those single-family homes to the east. They need your relief. By focusing on those areas of the reduction or removing Valley Road entirely, the developer can redesign to a more suburban look, more in keeping with wider unit placement, use more of the four-block units, and create more green states, not just for us, but the new residents. These are still going to be $400-plus thousand homes. Don't they deserve some room to breathe? Of course they do, and it's taking us to be the ones to remember them. Comprehensive plan. This entire time we've had, for three months, we've had Pulte hiding behind the comprehensive plan, saying, comprehensive plan says, I got to put 42 homes in this parcel. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan isn't telling Pulte to put 42 townhomes in. It says very, very, very openly, we need to increase density, and we do that by increasing the density in regular neighborhoods, by building more dense in comparison into the neighborhoods that exist. But it doesn't say you have to put in 42. It doesn't say you have to maximize. It says be prudent. It says use the tools like the City Council. Staff is saying, comprehensive plan says you got to put in the road. Well, once again, the roads, it's in the comprehensive plan, but so are like 12 or 14 other roads that aren't complete. Again, we can make a prudent decision about whether it's really needed. The comprehensive plan doesn't demand that it get done. It just says, keep an eye on it. When you build out that development, remember who's responsible for it. So if you look at Objective 2A, and I'm just a layman reading it, but it says prioritize infill residential development through outreach to surrounding single-family residential neighborhoods. I think if we reworded that today, we'd say through current residents. Our townhome friends are every bit as important as a single family. And through development incentives, such as alternative parking, tax incentives as appropriate. That's how we can do this. So our ask is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. We offer a path forward to a win-win-win. This is what we can give you. So to meet the residents' needs, reduce the density closer to the five-acre minimum instead of seven to better meet expectations of the existing neighborhoods. To meet the developers' needs, eliminate the road, but use that value to create the development incentive for a reduction of the total units of the property. That road is a financial asset, okay? The developers are responsible for developing the road. But you know what? The city doesn't have to have the road. But then to compensate, the developer should be able to not have to build so many units because that's the value that the road would have brought. The city is just saying, we still want the value of the road, but let's apply it to reducing the actual amount of density as opposed to just building a road nobody wants. The city gets its needs met, because even though the minimum density of five acres, which still is greater than the 2.5 or the 4.3 of the adjacent, it makes the comprehensive plan. It only makes sense that there's a compromise somewhere between 5 and 6.5 units per acre. Send it back to planning and let them find the compromise. Engage us, just like the comprehensive plan says. We should have been there on day one, but we weren't. And now we're here, I'm sorry, for 45 minutes, almost an hour, but we're here, fighting for our lives. It's a little bit much, but we're fighting for our lifestyle, right? So we think we have a solution. Details need to be worked out, but we really believe that this is how it can be done. And if Pulte can't make the financials work out, when developers who are watching this now, eating popcorn, see this and find out that the road is not essential anymore and they don't have to build it, they will come. They can make the financials work, and they can get an actual neighborhood that meets everybody's needs. Guys, we have sent you emails.
Don, go ahead and wrap this up.
I'm doing it. We've sent you emails. We've sent you letters. We've given you petitions. We've presented over and over. Hear our voice. That's all that we ask. If all of us combined can't move you, I just don't know what can.
Hearing our voice is different than necessarily moving, but boy, we have heard you, so thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So Heidi, is there anything that you had knew that's different, and maybe just zero just in on that? That'd be great. Thank you.
So Mayor, Council members, my name is Heidi Larson. I live at 17540 Hackberry Court in the Heritage Village Townhomes. First of all, I just want to thank you for your service. You guys have an important job to do, and I know you have hard decisions to make. You know, decisions like this determine whether current residents, like all of us in the room, and future residents continue to have the kind of exceptional quality of life that we have come to expect in Eden Prairie. So I have some serious objections to this proposal and would like to explain why. But I want to be really clear. I'm not opposed to the overall development of the site. I'm opposed to this particular project because it's not appropriate for this site as it is currently designed. So Don has done a great job giving you guys lots of information, and I'm just going to, I cut out a bunch of stuff, and I'm just trying to focus on one particular thing. I want to focus on the other locations in which this property or this project has been built. I know he showed you the one in Chanhassen, but I want to show you the other ones. Okay. So we, Don talked a little bit about how the density is so different. So in my opinion, this development is way too dense compared to the neighborhoods that surround it. You know, if you look at the other cities where they have approved this project, they have used locations with significant commercial, industrial, typically it's like freeway or four-lane highways that surround it. None of them were adjacent to single-family homes, and no significant trees or forested areas were destroyed to build them. In my opinion, it is simply crazy that Eden Prairie would approve locating this project in a quiet residential neighborhood with two-lane roads and allow the destruction of so many mature trees. So let's just walk through these real quickly. So Canterbury Crossing, this is in Shakopee. So I have a.
Sarah, can you hold?
No, hold on. No, I have a.
Can you move it from your, no?
No, 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 no. I'm trying to use a, no, don't move it.
Okay, sorry.
It's not going to, it's going to be too far.
Right there.
Yeah, right there. Well, it's just too far away. I was trying to, it's just too far. Okay. Well, can you circle right there in the middle? Okay, so right there in the middle is Canterbury Crossing. So right there is the development. So that is surrounded by the racetrack, commercial uses, industrial apartments, and the leftover remnant farms. Single-family homes are located across Eagle Creek Boulevard, right here. Yeah, so the single-family homes are south of that. It's built on a former vacant lot, so there are no woods worth it destroyed, and it's very close to Highway 169 down to the south. Yeah, down there. So Windrose in Maple Grove. This one in the middle. So that is located at the busy intersection of Highway 101 and Bass Lake Road. It's adjacent to the Gateway Place High Density Apartment Complex. Or, no, no, I'm sorry. It's adjacent to Hanson Implement and Storage, which is this light industrial outdoor storage business. There's a Hy-Vee just south, right there. To the west, there is childcare and the four-story Havenwood Retirement Center directly across the street, across 101. There's no single-family homes. There were no trees on the site. In Chanhassen, so just down the street, and as Don mentioned, everyone's familiar with this one. You know, it's right next to 212, Great Plains Boulevard, you know, next to apartments. There's a senior living development across the street. Single-family homes across Waters Edge Drive. Again, no woods, significant vegetation. Astor Mill in Rogers. So this is part of a larger Pulte development, which will contain multiple home types. So it was adjacent, it's adjacent to 129th Avenue, which is a busy four-lane road. To the east, it abuts the Autumn Trails Senior Housing Project, as well as Meadow Trail Apartment Complex. To the north, there are some higher-density townhomes. There weren't any woods or trees on this site. It used to be a former farm field. And off to the east, there's significant commercial and industrial developments. And then lastly, you have Pemberley in Brooklyn Park. So right there, just next door to Highway 610, you have Pemberley. Immediately to the west are Urbana Court, which is that building just to the west of, yeah, right there, that H building. So that's a 207 apartment complex. There's another high-density residential development located to the east, and of course, Highway 610 is to the north. Prairie Care Hospital is to the west. Single-family homes are located to the south, but those are all separated by 93rd Avenue, which is a major four-lane highway. And there aren't any woods in that area as well. So now, these locations where it has been approved, they look significantly different compared to the proposed location in Eden Prairie. So let's look at that site. So here you have it on the corner of Pioneer Trail and Dell Road. Immediately to the east are single-family homes with our planned buffer of, I have to correct this, I thought it was 90 to 120, and I heard tonight it's 90 to 140. Immediately to the south are Heritage Village Townhomes with a planned buffer of 34 feet from the road to the back of the townhouses. And I just want to explain something about our townhouses. The back of the townhouses consists of a sunroom and a deck and the master bedroom. So imagine if you lived in one of these units and your master bedroom is now 34 feet from this brand-new road. Now, on this lot, this has significant vegetation on it right now, and you can see it from the Google Map image. Virtually all of these trees are going to be removed and not replaced. We talked a lot about the density. You know, this proposed development is 6.85. Heritage Village is 4.3. I think Don quoted, single-family is 2.5. That really is such a huge difference between the neighboring properties. And as you can see, there's such a dramatic difference between the sites on which Brooklyn Park, Chanhassen, Maple Grove, Rogers, and Shakopee all approved this development, and the site on which Eden Prairie is now considering it to be built. And I just want to mention one other thing. So we've talked a lot about how the footprint of the townhomes consumes most of the space, and, you know, because of that, all these trees are going to be raised. You know, Eden Prairie is known for its beautiful parks and its significant tree canopy. And just look at the Google Map image. I mean, this tells the story, right there. Look at all the trees. The standards that all of you have enforced has helped to ensure a really beautiful And allowing the developer to destroy so many trees and allow them simply to pay a fine and not replace them is really contrary to the principles upon which this community has been developed. And simply, it's also a little insulting, because frankly, Pulte will develop one site and then move on to the next one. Everyone here, especially the people who live next door to this community, were the ones who have to live with the consequences. So in closing, I just want to get back to your responsibilities. City codes are put into place to protect all citizens, both current and future, and to protect the lifestyle that we have come to enjoy in Eden Prairie. Given the number of waivers that are required to fit this particular project into this particular location, it's pretty clear that this isn't the right project for this site as it's currently designed. If it was redesigned, maybe it would be the right project for this site. But if you approve this project as is, what kind of quality of life will you be providing for current and future residents? So just think about all the objections that everyone in this room is raising. These are the people who will live with the outcome of this decision every single day. So I strongly object to this proposal. I hope you will either, I hope you'll send it back for at least redesign or reconsideration. I hope you hear what our concerns are. Thank you very much.
So I'm going to read down the list of names of people that signed up, just so you know we have you, and if you wish to speak, we will listen. I would highly encourage you, if you have nothing new to share with us, you think about that. But again, we're here to listen. So Bill Gooding, Wolfgang Greiner, let's see, Linda Van Heest, Becca Frederick, John Thayer, John Mc, not sure I can read some of these, so sorry. It looks like Nolte, I'm not sure. Mark Romo, John Bruuson, Mark Kofir, Derek Sworin, Pat and Tom, it looks like Schmidt, Mark Skalaski, and Ted Melby. Those are the people that signed up. If you, I don't want you walking out of here tonight saying that I did not let you speak. So come forward if you can make it brief. And how about at this point, not, I hope that you're okay with this, that night that I said the big one, May 4, 2021, I clocked people at two minutes. If you want, if I can do that now, starting out now that, you know, we've given the big, if that's okay, I'm going to clock you at two minutes, and then call that time, and if you would be so respectful as to go and sit down. So thank you so much. Please come by. Again, if there's something super brand-new, and we want to know more, we'll keep you longer. Go ahead.
Liam Gooding, 17406 Ada Court. I'm president of the Heritage Townhome Association, and I do have a very unique topic. Since Heritage was built, and the three buildings that back up to this proposed development, we have had a we have had a storm-water drainage issue. The pond to what would be the southwest corner of Dell and Pioneer is a collector pond for a lot of the storm sewers in the area, and there is a pipe that outflows through there, comes behind those, that townhouse group. It has an open grating and two spots for groundwater to go into from gutters and all of those kinds of things and groundwater. Goes down to the east, turns south, joins up with a pipe that comes down Prospect, I think, and then goes into another pond. Not so much in the last couple of years, because we've been in a drought, but water, actually, when we get these crazy thunderstorms, the first open grate, instead of letting water go in, actually has water come up out of it. And it will back up, and over the years, I've talked to different people at the city. Actually, I had a talk with Patrick, somebody at the water thing the other, about a month ago. But we put riprap rock down to keep from washing, you know, dirt washing away. And it's helped, because we don't have the dirt wash away, but the water still backs up. We get two or three crazy thunderstorms, and we'll get about a foot away from people's back patios. And then the water will eventually drain into the system. So, you know, in my mind, either the pipe is too full, obviously, if water's coming out of it, either because it is clogged, it is broken somewhere between here and that pipe down there, or it is too small. So we built, if a development gets built on this property, and water, stormwater goes either into that or goes down Prospect, where it joins into the pipe.
So can we have that question? I want to know, too. Can we have that question answered? Just where will this water go? And if they have an issue, we need to have this development, this group meet later with our staff. But Robert, is it in any way connected? Do you feel confident it is or isn't?
Mayor Case, with the development, Kinsley would have to manage their stormwater runoff, which there is no management of that now. It just runs off to the pond. So they'll have to do infiltration on-site, and that will capture some water, which will meter it slowly to the pond that Mr. Goodman is talking about now. I don't know what the specifics are with this pipe that is on the Heritage site. Sounds like you've been talking with Patrick Sikora, who's our storm drainage engineer, so I would need to know a little bit more about that. I'm not sure what Patrick has done as far as.
So whatever is, it's got to be better if it's metered and at least has some resistance flow to it. But we can continue that conversation. So thank you for letting us know that.
Anything that gets added to it will aggravate this.
Well, it sounds like this would help it, but it sounds like there's an issue with your development that we need to address.
Well, yeah, I mean, but it's going to add water to it. You know, I'd ask.
It's going to take water away from it if it now captures it.
Pardon?
It's going to take water away if it now, it's not being captured right now.
Well, no, it's not. It is not.
But the new development would.
It might.
Well, it's got a Nert Pond, so it's got to capture by 1991's federal wetlands.
Yeah. But it will add water to this pipe eventually. It won't, what it does, it'll just add for a delay in drainage.
Well, there's an issue you raised that I definitely want to address. What I'm questioning in my mind is, how could it possibly add more water? The water that falls on this land falls on the land. That's not going to change. And now, if it's being captured in a Nert Pond, National Urban River Protection Pond, that formerly had not been captured?
Contour, it's, all right, the contour of the land, the development, or the land to the north, isn't, wasn't putting water onto our, onto the property.
Where was it going? Into the pond that's there, I'm assuming?
Eh, I don't know. The slope of the land would probably take it towards the.
Okay, wherever now it's going to go into the Nert Pond.
Yep, and that's where our, the water, our water goes into the pond and then comes out.
That pond, this goes into a brand-new Nert Pond that this development will capture all of its own water. I, I.
Anyhow, it needs to be looked at.
Perfect.
For anything that is built there, it needs to be looked at anyway.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yep.
I extended your two minutes, because I was part of that. All right. Next, anybody, if there's some issue that has not been raised yet, please, name and address. And if you don't mind, I'll try to keep you to two minutes, but if it's an issue that we need to know more about, I'll keep you extended. Go ahead.
I'll try to take a little more than that. One, on this particular project in point, I may.
Name and address, I just.
I'm sorry.
Your name and your.
My name is Ted Melby, and my serial number is 4720917. That's all you get.
No, then you don't get to speak here, sir. I'm sorry. I'm really serious. We've had this issue before. We just need a name and address. You need to be respectful of this system as well.
It's irrelevant.
Just give your address.
I gave it to the lady out there. I told her I lived in Eden Prairie. I told her I lived in Eden Prairie.
I appreciate, I've known you for a while, too. Just please give your address.
It's not relevant. That's from an attorney going to you.
Then please sit down. Thank you so much. Is there a next person that?
I gotta, I have to sit down, because I, you won't listen to me?
It's a policy of this council. Just give your name and address. It's not a big deal. Just give your name and address.
11881 Jermaine Terrace, Eden Prairie.
Jermaine. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You're not welcome. Anyway, on this issue, you may want to reconsider this, on the issue of deforestation on this project. I know that you're, that a certified arborist has now been hired by the city of Eden Prairie. Got to quiet down. And, and she is familiar with the I Tree Eco Program, and she could run the program and tell you in dollar amounts what the environmental harm will be by the removal of whatever the number of heritage trees. Heritage tree is from 10 inches up to 32 inches. Which is the segue, the second one point was, that I think I heard you say that no one ever told you that you made a bad decision?
No, I've been told that quite a bit, but.
You didn't go that far.
It was that the developments ended up being more positive than what people feared.
The, the, I heard now through the group here that the planning commission came out at 5:4.
4:3, yeah.
On the recommendation?
4:3.
4:3? Well, that was similar to Noble Hill, and I'm, my point is on deforestation. Noble Hill involved 357 significant inherited trees. And the economic cost of removing those trees turned out to be roughly $600,000. We looked at 12 of the other residential subdivisions in Riley Creek. And in those 12 residential subdivisions, 25,173 trees, significant heritage trees were removed. The environmental harm by removing those trees was $42 million.
Thank you, Don. We've heard that before, and I appreciate your sharing that.
And one more. We have 53 other residential subdivisions like that in lower, in Riley Creek Subwatershead District. We have not looked at, what's it, Bluff Creek, and we have not looked at Purgatory Creek. So I'm suggesting to you that your environmental, the environmental harm that's being caused by you voting in favor of these developments and not taking in consideration the removal of these trees is terrible. So.
Thank you, Don. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
And thank you for sharing your name and your address. Anyone else wants to share something that hasn't been shared, if you wouldn't mind giving your name and your address? For the record.
For the record.
Thank you. Wolfgang.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Wolfgang Greiner. I live at 17356 Hanson Court in the Heritage Townhomes. Appreciate your time tonight. I appreciate your patience with us. I was loaded for bear tonight. In fact, I was supposed to be the warm-up act for Don, and by you all shuffling this around, I kind of ended up at the tail end of this. So I'll be very, very brief in deference to everybody else that needs a word. First of all, Mayor Case, thank you very much for coming out. I appreciate that you actually came and looked at the site. Some of you others may have as well that I'm not aware of, but it, thank you very much. I appreciate that, because it puts this into context. I do want to make two quick, brief points. I live in the home that actually face what might become Valley Road. I'm 40 feet, my bedroom is 40 feet off of Valley Road. Any size fence will not ever block the car lights coming out of the new community. If you look at the elevations, car lights coming out, they're going to end up in our, in our bedrooms. We're going to need blackout shades. The noise from the road is going to mean we're going to be leaving our bedroom windows closed year-round. And I want to point out, as the city engineer, Mr. Ellis, mentioned, the homes that are along Dell are only 30-something feet off of Dell. However, those homes were built with Dell already existing. Those are the sidewalls to their homes. They, their kitchen window faces Dell, not their bedrooms. Significant when you live someplace, whether it's your kitchen that's picking up automotive noise or your bedroom. My other points were all, have all been expressed rather eloquently and repeatedly and maybe again, so I'll, I'll give, I'll give my time to whoever else might need it. I appreciate your, your putting up with us tonight. But, and just very briefly, again, get rid of the road, reduce the dentist's density, and give us some buffer space, because this development in no way is compatible with what else is in our community right now, and it needs buffering to work. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you, Wolfgang. Someone else?
Um, Becca Frederick, I live at 9236. I'm just coming at this from a perspective of a newer resident in the area and also a parent of two very young kids who ride their bikes up and down this road all the time. We are also in the northeast corner, so we are one of those three special houses that are directly affected by these 42 new townhomes. And I see my neighbors to the right and my neighbors to the left, especially the one that's 50 feet. Sorry, Santos. So obviously, the density is a big problem for us, because we don't want 42 new neighbors in our backyard. We don't want to lose the trees. No, the quiet, the privacy, the safety are all three reasons why. We moved to this location three years ago, and all this feels threatened now, especially for our kids. It seems like connecting Valley Road is trading one safety for another. So maybe, you know, emergency response can get there faster, but then opening the road, infinitely greater chances of first something to exist, because we just cannot control the drivers. And all of the things that were mentioned today, as far as the, the traffic studies and all of that, but what about all the things that weren't, you know, addressed? Like, how do you address the noise pollution, the light pollution from all of these 42 townhomes in our new, that will be our new backyard neighbors? How do you address, you know, like, what are the increased risks of car accidents with people taking shortcuts and driving too quickly, with our kids walking to the bus stop every morning? So, you know, as a parent, that worries me. There are 14 kids under nine years old, and just the two present-place cul-de-sacs alone does not include all of the other, you know, high school kids, junior high kids, middle school kids, and like Don's kids have grown up in this wonderful neighborhood, and I just feel like our kids deserve the same chance that everybody else had. Thanks.
Marv, you'll be next. Can I just say one thing?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Marv, just two, hey, stay there, but just two seconds. I think I'm the only one that was on the council when, or was it the woman that just came up here? When, you're hiding, when your development was put in. And I distinctly recall the people along Cedar Forest saying what you just said. I'm not exaggerating. More cars. It's going to be dangerous. What are you going to do when the first child is dead because of all these extra houses there? What about the new noise pollution? What, I had a beautiful area with deer. Now I have houses in my backyard. We hear it every time. I just want to add that, that's kind of, a memory came back, that that's what they said about your development. And, and it's worked out well. I drove in there today. It's beautiful. And, and I don't think anyone up and down Cedar Forest today is against your houses being there, that I, I could see. Marv, a friend from 1994, I have known him forever.
You're telling my age.
No, I was around, and I knew his wife, Wally, so well, and just a good friend from the past. Marv?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to you on the council, thanks to you on the staff. We do appreciate our city. You've done a good job in running the city, and we're proud of it. We're proud of our neighborhood, too. And I would like to point out to you the difference, in my opinion, your responsibilities and Pulte's responsibilities. Now, I am not disparaging Pulte. They are a very good company. The structures that they build are sound and quality. So I'm not criticizing Pulte. However, to read from their mission statement, it states, "They focus on return on capital employed and return on investment." That is noble. All of us have profited from having the focus on good use of our monies. However, they are looking at financial return. You are looking at quality of life in addition to the cost issues. So there is a difference in your perspective and their perspective. I attempted, too late, to send each of you pictures that I had made, and I did not, and I'm not as, as polished as a PowerPoint presenter as my contemporaries. However, if you would drive down Dell Road, you would see the entire neighborhood, the Heritage Village Townhomes, separated from Dell Road by a series of over 100 very mature pine trees. Provides a beautiful barrier. We have great respect for that as an aesthetic value to our neighborhood. If you will look behind our neighborhood, the entire length of Libby Road is bordered by an area that runs the entire length that is owned by the association, but we have put it in a conservation easement with the city of Eden Prairie. So we have those two barriers that we're proud of, and it does signify our pride in our community. You will also notice in Heritage Village Townhomes, we have good streets. We have on-street parking. Streets are wide enough for on-street parking. You will also notice designated visitor parking areas. So, and, and the houses are spaced quite generously and beautifully landscaped, which brings up the point. I think the bottom, cutting to the chase of a lot of things that we have discussed, is the density of the homes. The density of the Pulte development versus the density of our homes in Heritage Village, and of course, our neighbors over behind us, the single-family homes. So the Pulte proposal is for maximum density, and as you saw on the slides, the appearances of the Pulte-proposed homes are very inconsistent with the appearances of our neighborhood. It really doesn't seem to fit with the existing neighborhood, and the density is about twice what it is in our neighborhood. So I think a lot of the issues, whether it's traffic, whether it is road construction, whether it is, whether it is deforestation, a lot of that hinges on density. So if there is any one thing that I would urge you to do, is consider this density issue as a core problem of the entire things that we have been discussing.
Thanks, Marv. Are you able to wrap it up, or?
Pardon me?
I hate to rush you, but are you able to wrap it up? But we've got the core density piece.
I'm very close to that. So I would urge that you deny the present proposal. You go back to Pulte, or if they're not interested, there are others who will be, I think Pulte will be, tell them to reduce the density in half and create an image somewhat. will be, tell them to reduce the density in half, and create an image somewhat comparable to the existing neighborhood. And along with that, I think a lot of the forestry issues, the road issues, the appearances issues will be resolved upfront, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Marv.
And if, if I may say in closing, to Mr. Jothammer, thank you very much for running a great park system. He is retiring and has done a great job. We thank you.
Jay moves into his last month of employment after tonight, so he's winding down. So, thank you. Come forward and, and name an address, and I just want to throw out, it is getting, it's 9:10. If there's nothing new, and it's been said, it's, you don't wear us down, or you don't convince us by emotion. We've been studying this, we've watched the presentation from Don three times. We know all the issues. There's nothing, actually, and I'm not, not to disparage anyone tonight, I appreciate all of you coming up. I can honestly say I've learned nothing, though. That's not a surprise to you, I think. I've learned that you care about it, that's important, and we've all learned that this means a lot to you, that's very important. Factually, though, right, we, we knew this, right? So just know that. You're welcome to give your name and address, go ahead.
And in that spirit, I've whittled my presentation down from the original three hours to the next 30 seconds.
Great, wonderful. Thank you. We appreciate that.
So, my name's Derek.
Name and, yeah.
Yeah, Derek Sworn, and I live at 9344 Preston Place, and I thank you for reading my email, and I got a response from you, so thank you very much. I really just want to, I didn't plan on saying something, but I just wanted to address the comment I think you made to a previous comment here, that the Cedar Forest residents had the same, you know, fears and trepidations about traffic streaming down their road when Preston Place Development, when Heritage went in. I really just want to address the motivation of the driver that I think that we have in mind when we're worried about opening Valley Road up. It's not someone who lives there, it's someone who doesn't live there, who's just trying to make time.
Perfect.
Right? So.
Thank you.
With that, thank you, appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you. Name and address, thank you.
Mark Skolski, 17409 Ada Court, Heritage Village Townhome owner, and I have less than two minutes of comments to make. The first relates to density, and Pulte states the development appeals to first-time home-buying families. So if you assume young families purchase even 50% of the units, so 42 units, 50%, two children per family, you're looking at 42 children in a, in a rather high-density housing development without adequate green space or play area. So a lot, again, just another variation of, I think the density is, is too high. I was at the planning commission meeting, and I know the vote was four to three to approve, and many of the members of the planning committee expressed the notion, well, there was great discussion about the road access, and in the end, they said, "Well, we hear the residents, but how can we go against expert opinion? The expert opinion recommended the road go through." Well, the, the, the concern is, the road specialist emphasized the, the benefit of the access, but really didn't weigh the potential harm that the road extension would, would, would cause. The Cedar Forest Drive is routinely used by pedestrians, dog walkers, children riding bicycles, and none of that risk-benefit analysis was presented. It was just, this is a benefit with increased road access, but didn't factor into account some of the potential harms from that. And, and I think, and that, and the reason I bring this up is because the, the planning commission placed great emphasis on, "Well, our expert says the road should go through," period, and didn't have a more reasoned discussion of, "Well, there's a benefit, there's also a harm," and clearly, the, the, the current residents don't see any particular benefit to it, and they, there's clearly some harms. The very final comment is, when the presentation today said, "Well, the townhomes are so close to Dell Road as it is," well, he didn't take into account that, as was mentioned, Dell Road has a long line of extensive spruce trees as a barrier. Thank you.
True. Thank you so much. All right, is there anyone? I don't want you leaving tonight and saying I cut you off. Is there anyone else that's got something to share that has not been said? That's not what I asked, but you may come up and speak.
But I promise you, I'll be very brief. Nancy Lauffer, 9290 Preston Place.
Hi, Nancy.
Twenty-plus-year resident, 37 years in Eden Prairie. And one thing I want to bring up that I don't, haven't heard, it's been kind of pushed, talked about, parking. Forty-two units, I believe it's less than 12 guest parking spots. I've lived in townhomes in Eden Prairie, I know that they have limited storage, I know that the one place people store things is their garage. So when I hear that the parking meets the staff requirements, they're assuming that the people aren't going to park their car in their driveway, and where are the people going to park? If I look at the plan, it says that the private road will have no parking signs because it's a fire lane. So where are the guests going to park? They can't park on Dell. If we extend Valley, it's going to fall into the neighborhood. Then let's talk about parking on Valley as it stands today, Preston Place. People park on both sides of the street, you can't get through with a minivan, much less an emergency vehicle.
Okay. Great, thank you so much. We doing okay? Can we, can we close the public hearing? Motion just to close the public hearing portion of the motion to make tonight.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I want to compliment everyone again. I keep comparing to May 4th, most infamous meeting in my 27 years. You all are astoundingly more respectful and mature and wise, so thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight, thank you for all your thoughts, thank you for the respect we feel. We're going to address much, a lot of what you say tonight. My goal is not to, I mean, I'd love to say my goal is to send everyone out of here and you're thrilled, you got exactly everything you want, and my goal is to do what's best for the people of Eden Prairie. That's broad, we'll try to explain that. Hopefully, that does work well for all of you by the end of the evening, we'll see. I, but I, the, the letters you wrote, just that your participation has been excellent, and, and it shows that the night of May 4th, we, like I said, about 75% of the people didn't live in Eden Prairie, so they had no vested interest here, you all do. So, thank you, there's a huge difference. All right, council, I think maybe the best thing to do is to go down the line and just begin to share our thoughts and feelings, and so we, let me talk about open meeting law for a moment. Open meeting law says that the five of us cannot meet outside of a public setting, so you are literally seeing tonight us talk to each other for the very first time on this issue, with a little caveat of an exception, two people can meet. So I usually choose a council member kind of each issue to have as my council member. So Lisa Toomey and I have been quite a bit connecting on this one, so we know exactly what each other thinks. I don't know what PG thinks, I don't know what Mark thinks, I don't know what Kathy thinks. I don't know if these two have chosen, you know, you get the point. So, you're going to hear us tonight, talk to each other, and tell each other what we think, and if we, I don't know if we debate or what we do, but you'll, you'll get to see democracy in action, because we have not talked to each other. We have done our due diligence. I would guess every one of us has come in here pretty much with a, a lot of our thoughts, at least, directed toward where we're going to head with this. So, everyone okay if I start with Lisa and go down the line? I'll skip myself and go to Kathy and Mark, and then I'll end it, and then we can keep having conversation, is that fine?
Sure, I'll go first.
Okay, and, and by the way, we can further ask questions of proponent or staff, and, and it's, it's not real common, but we might even pull someone back up from the audience if we wanted to clarify something, but typically, the public meeting part is closed. So whatever you want to do now, you've got the floor, so you can read some comments, you can ask.
I have some questions, I have a question for Pulte, and probably Julie or Robert could answer.
Why don't you go ahead and ask those?
Okay. So, would you like to come up, please? I have a question. So if, so we've heard from the neighbors about their, their concerns about the density. Can you give us your thoughts on why the density can't be lowered, and also if the, your thoughts about the density if the road were to be gone?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, to the council member's question, we already, as we worked through different renditions of the plan, we actually had a plan that called for 43 units. We did lose a unit, we're at 42. Projects like this, as you can imagine, are very difficult. My boss likes to use the metaphor of, you're trying to thread a needle, sometimes a very difficult needle. We're looking at trying to balance different interests. We sometimes, we hear comments about the finances of a project. Well, the finances are a real factor of the project, they can make or break a project, and we're at a, a level of density that allows for this project to go forward. We also have to seek corporate approval on our projects, and we're in the process of doing that. So, we feel that the density, as it currently sits, sets us up for the best level of success. It isn't just the road expense. We are also, I believe, the very first townhouse development that is participating in the inclusion, inclusionary housing program. That means we have five units that will be limited in what they can be sold for, which means the other units carry the burden of those expenses, they don't go away, they get spread around. Park dedication and usable open space, those are additional expenses with the project. So, the proposal itself is at its needed density to make the project work. And with regards to the city's comp plan, we hit that guidance, we heard that we hide behind it. We don't hide behind it, we're informed by it, and the comp plan process is a lengthy process. I used to be a city manager, I went through several myself, I understand the amount of work and effort that goes into those comp plan processes, and the city looked at this site and said, you know, this could be a medium-density site somewhere between five and 14 units an acre. If another application came in under the RM 2.5 and met the straight zoning, it would be a very different kind of more impactful development from a density standpoint. So as we thread the needle of navigating the finances, trying to provide the needed infrastructure, managing the stormwater, as we heard, effectively, providing good landscaping, and meeting the inclusionary housing code, this is where the density needs to be.
Thank you.
Let's let Lisa.
Also, so, I have another question about if the road wasn't there, I don't think you, this would be one for the city, for staff, I think.
We'll, we'll call you back up if we need to.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mayor.
If Valley Road was not connected and the sidewalk just went through, could we also add a trail, like a bike trail or something, maybe?
In place of?
Yeah.
You're asking.
I don't know, just, and, and, but who would maintain it anyways, either way? Who would maintain that sidewalk? Would we maintain it, or?
Mayor Case, Councilmember Toomey. So for sidewalks, which is being proposed, it's homeowner responsibility, so the new sidewalk would be the responsibility of the HOA that would be formed through the Kinsley Development. Trails, I think that's something that we would want to negotiate with the property owner. I don't know where the trail would have a proper terminus, I mean, Dell Road makes sense, but to just dump it into the existing single-family neighborhood, I don't know that that would make a lot of sense.
There is a trail somewhere already, right?
But it does stop, though, when you get up to Cedar Forest, there's nothing. I mean, there's no sidewalk or trail.
So we could potentially have a longer trail. Okay, and then also, if, oh, I should have asked you this while you were up there, I'm sorry, I can ask Julie, or, or, sorry. Anyway, so if, if the road isn't there, is there a need for a fence? Or would you put that fence up?
Mr. Mayor, to the council member's question, we certainly would put the fence up in either scenario if that provided the desired screening. There are other things that could be looked at, too, with additional landscaping, things of that nature, which is what I mentioned before, but it also would be fine with a screened fence.
So you could put it up in addition to more additional landscaping or birmingham or whatever?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then I just wanted to make sure that the quality of the fence would be pretty good, because I've seen some vinyl fencing that isn't that great.
Mm-hmm. Yes. You know, we'd want something that our residents, our new consumers are proud of, too, because they're going to be looking at it also. So we would certainly want it to be a quality investment that would be maintained also by the HOA.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Now, I won't ask you any more questions.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr.
Now, do you guys want to hear my thoughts, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay. Obviously, I'm not a big fan of the road. And part of, part of, a lot of it is your response to it, so thank you, everyone, for coming out, and thank you for your emails and your phone calls and voicing your opinions, I really appreciate it. Let's see, obviously, without a road, you could have the additional landscaping and buffering for the neighbors to the south. We could save, it looks like, from these plans, at least five heritage trees would be saved, so we wouldn't have to take down the larger trees in that area. The EMS times will remain, will remain the same for your neighborhood, but you seem to be okay with that, and it's really not much of a difference. And keeping it would be maintaining the status quo, so if extended, if we did decide that the road would be a good idea, which I don't, Valley Road would have more traffic, and logic just tells me that more cars that are utilizing road, the probability of an incident increases, so it's good to, I think, not have the road in there. As far as density, I'm having trouble with this one right now. I originally, I think the density of this project is reasonable, and, and I will tell you why, if the road doesn't go in, because you have, I'm trying to find my paper here, okay? You have, the Heritage Townhomes to the south are 5.6 units per acre, or 4.3 units per acre, I'm sorry, with the outlaw. And, and then across the street, across Dell, it's 8.2 acres, the Heritage Place Townhomes there. If these townhomes go in, there's 6.8. We've already talked about that, everybody knows the numbers, but I think it's a good progression. I mean, we have, it goes from three units to 4.3 to 6.8. And I think that it's a reasonable, a reasonable development to go in there when it comes to density, if the road is not there. So that's just my opinion, so.
We can come back to you, too.
Sure, thanks.
Councilmember Narayan? Thoughts?
So, yeah, thank you. I think I have a couple of questions for the developer, so if you can come up, I really appreciate it.
Yes, we could have you pull a chair up, but.
Yeah.
It's okay, enjoy the.
Getting steps.
I have some general question that nobody brought up yet. How many affordable units are here out of 42?
Five is what your ordinance calls for.
And, and you comply into that five as well, right?
Are they, are they affordable AMI 80 or 50, or do you recall? I'm assuming 80, but.
It's, I believe it's 115.
Oh, 115.
Yeah.
Got it.
That's what ordinance allows.
Sure, of course, got it.
Second, my favorite question about EV charging. Do you have EV charging in every?
The panels are. The panels are sized so that EV charging can easily happen. And there is, if the owner would like to even step up that panel, it's a very nominal charge to go, I believe, to like what's called a Level 2 charger. So that's one of our, our greener initiatives.
So you have wired wherever the entry point of the power is to the garage, so owner can easily add.
Exactly. Yes. The, yeah. The panel has capacity.
And I think one of the residents brought up guest parking. That's one of the things I was thinking as well. For 42 unit, you have 12 guest parking. Is that ratio is the right amount in your perspective? And also, same question for the staff. What is that ratio should be?
Would you like to hear from me or your staff?
Oh, let's hear from you first.
Sure. So we always try to provide as much guest parking as we, we possibly can. There might, you know, if Valley Road did go through, there could be some parking there, although city staff said, we don't want you to count that if that road does go through. So what, the way we looked at it was, we read your code, we comply with your code with the amount of parking, because there is two stalls in the garage, two stalls in the driveway, and then 12 additional throughout the site.
Yeah, I was just imagining Thanksgiving event, 42 families bringing their families. Where do they park if, if it is more than 12 people coming in? I mean, of course, you can park on the driveway, right? So you may fit two of them.
Sure.
Right? Two guests per unit, right?
That would be correct.
And any other street parking available there?
Not on the private roads.
Not on private roads. So we got to the tree, and we're talking about cutting the heritage tree. And how many trees are we cutting? The number of trees not caliber?
Um, I'm probably going to need some help from.
Sixty. There's 89 total.
Say it again.
Eighty-nine total trees that are significant.
So 89 trees are cut, and what?
Eighty-nine total, 60 are removed.
60 out of 89 are being taken.
Nine trees were considered heritage.
Oh, I see. 60 of them are taken out. And those 60, give me an idea in terms of size of those trees?
This is Mark Roush, our engineer on the project from Alliance Engineering.
Thank you, Mark.
Give me my address.
Yes.
733 Marquette Avenue, Minneapolis. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So we have a significant amount of asteries on the site, several cottonwoods that are growing in that, I'll call it kind of a ravine wash, that's taking drainage from Pioneer today. And there's some cedar. There's very few hardwoods. There's a few maples, one large maple that we actually are being able to save that's on the perimeter. There's a few walnut that are on a smaller size, which are nice trees. We're saving a few. Couple of white pines by the old house. One is removed currently. Did mention, Mr., Ms. Lisa, do we? Mentioned that we will be able to save a few more of those cedars if the road doesn't go through. That will definitely, you know, we can preserve that whole corner of the site, basically.
So if you look at this 60 tree, if I can look at two aspects, one is the tree middle of the property, the other one is tree on the borderline of the neighbors. Can you explain to me the 60 tree, where they're falling? I mean, the neighbors probably want to keep more on the borderline, so they.
Sure.
Buffer from your development, which is their house. Is a lot of the work cut inside the property or on the lines of the property?
Well, there's definitely, most of them in the north, as you've seen on the graphics they shared, north and northeast corner, kind of around the, one of the homesteads that are up there. There's that ravine. They've been growing on the slopes, because they used, I think they raised horses, I talked about, up top, so there's no trees up there. So there are definitely trees in that ravine, and the grading to, to smooth that out just cannot save those trees. There are trees along the east side of the existing home on Pioneer. Those will all basically be saved, because we don't need to, we're not that close. There's several trees along the back of most of the residents I'm pressing that aren't necessarily surveyed, because they don't meet size, that will be retained. That vegetation can be retained. But again, they don't meet the size requirement of the city to inventory, per se. And then if we don't put the road through, there will be several more trees we could save, cedars, on that southeast corner of the site as well. So.
So there is no way you can reduce number of trees being cut?
We can reduce trees being cut by not putting the road through.
How many trees that will save if you don't put the road through?
It might be five-ish, something like that. I think five. Five trees. Five of the inventory trees.
Five to 10?
Five of the inventory trees, yeah. Maybe a few more at the end of the day. But there are more trees there. I just want you to recognize, these are just the trees that are, meet the size to be surveyed.
Okay. Thank you. In your graphic, you show from house to house, one of them is 70 feet?
90.
The shortest one is 90?
Yes.
And the other one is 140 or something?
Yes. And then the one to the south is 110.
Is there any way you can modify your plan to increase that 90 to similar level, level as 140?
No.
What about taking that unit out?
That would threaten the project.
So taking that unit out means the project's dead. I mean, it's just financially not viable.
Right.
Is that what you're saying? Very interesting. Okay. Yeah, regard to the road. So you've mentioned that you, you are, you're still going to build the fence, which will, can I say eliminate the lights coming to the townhomes, or it's reduce the light coming to the townhomes?
It'll screen automobile headlights. That's the point. There were some elevations that I had included in the planning commission presentation that, just to economize a little bit, I took them out. They may have served a good purpose for tonight, because it really shows you, from a cross-section view, kind of the line of sight of the townhomes as they relate to the existing homes, and traffic and screening of those headlights. But that's primarily what that fence would do, or, or other screening.
Again, going back to the tree, that fence area, you will be putting some trees as well? So in the later years, that trees will grow, and that itself give the, the blockage?
Yeah, we, it works. We can, we can make that commitment if the road doesn't go through, because if it does go through, then we're planting in the city's right-of-way, and the city would have to allow for that. And there just might not be quite enough space for all of that, which is why, with the road going through, we came up with the fence idea to try to, to try to meet some of the concerns we heard at the neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, my understanding, talking to staff, is we want to put the road for the residents. Sounds like residents don't want to put the road. So going back to my fellow commissioner here, I'm not, I'm saying why we are putting the road, because there is so many objections to that. But same time, earlier I was talking, I think would like to have that space reserved. So in the future years, the residents feel, the new residents, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, and say, wait a minute, there's too much traffic. We want to build this road. So city has the option to build that road at that time. Does that something make sense to you, what I'm saying?
Sure, yeah. Mr. Mayor, to the council member's point or question, I, I think of the alternatives that were shown, what would be ideal, I think, is if the right-of-way was dedicated. The trees would then be preserved in that kind of south, what are we talking, east corner-ish, and the city retains that opportunity in the future if circumstances change. If we're allowed to make that entrance from Dell part of a, the private size of the street, that then allows us to do some additional birmingham and, and tree landscaping to help address the concerns of the neighbors to the south. So that would be my suggestion to you. I think that would kind of check all those boxes.
And still will be some walking path or sidewalk, sidewalk will be there so that neighbors can walk the dogs or children and so on, right?
Certainly.
And that's, for the staff, Robert, does that make sense, what the developers say?
Mayor Case, Councilmember Ryan. Alternative 3. That was the alternative 3. That, yes.
Is that means in the future, do we still have the option to build that?
Yes, we would.
I mean, a space to, because alternative 3 is, you reduce the. Oh, the wider, okay.
Yes.
The other part is, since we want that option to build that road in the future, if the residence wants to do that, then I guess, I don't know exactly how we, the developer has to put some money out there for future development aspects.
It'd be on us.
That's, it's gonna be on us?
Yeah, we would just.
But currently, they will be building, so they have to have that cost, right? So we can ask them if we want to negotiate with them, right, to put the.
Money in escrow.
Money in escrow. And then when the, when our time comes, that we can use that money to, so we don't have to charge other residents neither, really. That sounds good.
Anything else?
Yes. Density. I'm with Mr. Toomey. I'm really, everybody's so concerned about density. I'm worried about that 90 feet, that corner house. See, if I look at the 140 feet away, that's pretty far. Then I see 90 feet, that corner house. I am, I am really, and then there is huge objection in terms of density as well, even though it confirms to all the rules, you know, still the practical aspect is the concern.
May I speak to that, though?
I'm struggling.
May I speak to that?
Yeah, please do.
So, so that lot that has a 90-foot distance, when you look at that home, for, for whatever reason, it was allowed to be built very, very deep into the lot. It's inconsistent with the other homes. So it kind of, by virtue of that decision 20 years ago, is creating that, that issue. There will be existing trees and planted trees that are screened in that area. So additionally, with the 90 feet of distance, I, I think that it really will mitigate concerns.
So if you are not building the road, you have more space, right? So you, can you shift around so you can get more buffer between that 90 feet?
I would have to look at that.
So that's the option, see?
I'd have to look at that, but we'd probably be moving them further south. Some of them would have to squeeze further south, potentially. But I'd, I mean, that's something I would struggle to answer right now.
Can you speak up, please?
Well, we can keep talking about this as a group, but that's going to get into the tension. You can't reserve the right-of-way and move the house. You just said you kind of like to reserve the right-of-way. You can't have both. So we can talk about that in a moment, but is that okay for now that?
Thank you so much.
Do you have anything else?
Of course.
No, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Your plan shows trees next to the homeowners to the east, behind their homes.
Okay.
Are those mostly existing trees, or are those trees that you're planning to plant, which will be four feet high and small trunk-like is typically proposed to be planted?
Yeah. When you look at the plan, there are kind of fainter colored circles, and then there are darker colored circles. And so the fainter ones are existing trees that will remain, and the darker ones represent newer plantings. And so they're kind of blended together.
Okay, looking at that, it's trying to decide which proportion is which. It looks like more new trees than old.
Well, you're looking at a colored rendering, and what I was referencing was our actual landscaping plan that's in the, in the plat. I think that one would probably be easier.
Do you have a copy of it someplace that could be put up, or?
Yes.
Hey, our members of the council. So if you are able to take a look and possibly zoom in on this property line, by my count, there are seven existing trees that would stay, and five new trees that would be added along that segment of the property line.
What about going further down, all the way down to the road area where you're coming across the backyards of the people that live along there?
Along that property line, Councilmember Nelson, there are more trees being added than being saved, but there are still, I can count, four, five, at least five trees that are being saved along that stretch.
Are those significant-sized trees? And, and since, you know, why are, are there other trees along that area? And if so, why are they being taken out? Because it looks like it's, you know, a sort of a clear area back there.
That perimeter is actually vegetated right now. And it's, again, it's hard to see, but there's a few trees that were measured as significant in size. But there's just vegetation that is there of smaller trees and mixed. So we aren't removing any of that, or don't need to. The idea would be, we'd be able to try to supplement with some of these new plantings in there. We're trying to mitigate the removals through the city's code.
Yeah.
So we're finding the best place for those. But, so for now, we're showing those there, but like, there's, we have to situate them, you know, as such where we don't disrupt the authority there. If that makes sense?
Yeah. Since I can't, I don't have the thing to look at, what kind of trees are we talking about adding?
Mix of coniferous trees primarily. There's some deciduous mixed in, of course.
So a lot of them will be pines or spruce or that kind of thing?
Yep. And we can work with staff.
How big size are you planting, like four feet, six feet?
No, I think they're the six and eight, the eight-foot typical for conifers.
Okay. So they've got some protection level, because the first few years, that kind of tree grows really slow, in my experience.
Right.
Having planted a few over time, um, yeah, the eight-foot ones, which are nice sized to get, they don't become 12-foot ones really quickly.
Right.
But they do, they will have some size, then. Won't be large bushes, in other words.
Correct. And the, we are, I think several of the deciduous need to be four inches as well. So there'll be a little bit of a head start.
It's never been said, will these townhomes have lower level or basements in them, or is it just the main level and an upper level?
These are slab-on-grade, no basement. So it's a, it's an entry level on the ground floor, and then an upper level.
Okay. All the middle ones will only have windows to the, mostly to the back on the main floor, then?
Yeah, there will be windows to the back. There will be windows to the front on the upper level, and mostly the, and the front is garage and entry door. But you'll still have windows up on the second level.
Yeah, but on the main level, pretty much all your windows will be in the back for all those center units.
That's correct.
And there's a lot of center units.
That's correct. Yep.
Does that, are they, you know, is it all the way across to get the light in? Or is it just a couple of windows? You know, how much light are we putting into the middle of these homes, in other words?
I can't speak to the size of the windows, but if, I've been in many of our model homes, and they're, they're brightly lit homes. I mean, we put in good-sized windows to allow in plenty of daylight.
And all the upstairs rooms will be able to have windows to the outside, then?
Yes.
Okay. Because it, you know, obviously, the end units will probably have windows to the. Because it, you know, obviously, the end units will probably have windows to the side as well, but you don't have many men, end units compared to all of your other units.
That would be correct, yes.
Let's see here. I guess, and the trees that are being taken down are strictly in the middle where homes are going? Or are you taking them down just because it's a little more convenient here and there?
We're always wanting to preserve any of the trees that, that we can. It's in our interest to do that, especially if they're measured trees. So, you know, we're, we're needing to remove them where we are building homes and where we are doing grading activity, but we are trying to preserve where we can. And that's, that's kind of those circles that Director Kleema walked us through a little bit.
So some of, most of those homes will have some privacy still, plus whatever. Is there a fence along that line as well against those properties? Or is it wide open to yours?
Well, we're, we have talked about a fence to the south.
But what about to the east?
Not to the east, that, that grade actually follow, falls away quite a bit. And like our engineer pointed out, there's a lot of growth that's already there. We're gonna be adding to it and planting, you know, those coniferous trees he, he referenced. So we'll be adding to the buffer there.
Okay.
There is storm drainage infrastructure back there, too, so a fence could get a little tricky.
All right. I think that's all my questions that I have for you, but thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
I can easily see this development seeming to fit into this neighborhood better by either going to alternate two or alternate three, where you've got just a road into here, but I do want to keep right-of-way. If the city needs it, I no more want to give right-of-way than I would like to give a park away.
Alternative three then. Alternative three, then.
Well, three is less width, two is whole width, but right-of-way kept. Either of those I could go for, but, and I think it sounds like that might make a lot of the rest of the neighborhoods happy. But if it turns out it's not working somehow, then I want to be able to have us go in and do it. So I can, I can vote for, you know, just going into their site, but I can't vote for anything that doesn't give us right-of-way and the ability to go in and put it in if we see that's the best thing for the neighborhoods. May not be, it may never be used, but no sense at all in not retaining that, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, Councilmember Freiber.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple issues to talk about. Definitely, I'm against the road going through, okay? I like, I know some, it's, it, something has to happen that goes out on Dell as far as from the project itself. I understand that. And it seems like the most viable options might be two or three, I believe is what you were just talking about, Councilmember Nelson. They look like the two best there on it. But I got some other issues, too. I walked that property three times in the last four days. And along Preston Place, you have properties right there that are three-quarters million to almost a million dollars. And, you know, you talk about the green. You've got a whole lot of buffering to do up in there as far as green. There's, the townhouses themselves are very high. Okay, they're, you know, they're, they have a pretty high pitch to them off on there. And the buffering between that and the backside of, of Preston is fairly soft as far as if, once you start taking out the trees you're looking at. So my opinion is both on that side and also the ones on heritage, there's not a whole lot of, you know, buffering that I'm hearing about going up on there. I hear about the six-foot fence, I get it. But the trees you're talking about are like eight-foot trees, you know, on it. I think when we're talking about green and Eden Prairie, you know, cash and low of as opposed to replacing more caliber-ish inches is not always a good choice, because in Eden Prairie, trees are a big deal, okay? And so I just would just say, as far as maybe consider what I'm saying on that, on it. The other thing I'm having a problem with are the setbacks. You know, when we're talking, we're talking two-story, high townhouses, that there's not a lot of neighborhood continuity involved. And I'm talking about coming off, you know, we talk about how many units per acre coming off a heritage. They're pretty low, they're pretty low. And you're coming in at two, you know, two stories plus a peak. You're coming up very high on that. The continuity in that area is low, okay? Especially if someone's wanting to say, well, it's just a continuation coming off of heritage. Well, yeah, it is, just for units to units, but the, what kind of units we're talking in this density, to me, is making an impact. When I'm looking at a three-thousand foot, as far as minimum, before you need a, you know, a waiver to go down to approximately two thousand square feet, that's almost thirty percent, okay? I know your average, you know, a lot size, you know, you know, fits into that. But I think if you start looking at a thirty percent reduction, and then you're starting to talk about reducing density, you need every bit of these waivers to get that through, you know? There's no question about it, I mean, I understand that. But that's, that's a big, big waiver right there, to me. Especially when I'm starting to see, you know, I'm seeing just how high those towns are. I know the project in Chanhassen, you know, I know where that is. And I know how tall they are. So, but I can go along as far as like, something has to come in off of Dell. I understand to feed, you know, feed the project itself. It's not gonna go through those and get my vote to want it, okay? But I am open to either alternative two or three. I, I, you know, that's open consideration for myself, because I can see merit. Mr. Ellis, can I just ask you a quick question, please? Which one was the smaller one was, was three, that's the private? Okay, is that gonna pose a problem, though, as you see it, with, with any type of emergency vehicles or anything?
Councilmember Freiber, I don't believe so, no. They've got private drives, private roads that serve the rest of the neighborhood. So adding the additional length should not be an issue.
Okay. Okay, that's all I got to say as far as on it. They, then if that was the consideration, then I would, I would prefer the smaller one, as far as, which is two, correct?
Three.
Three, excuse me, three.
If it's not three, then it'll be two.
Don't, don't let us go there. All right.
The private one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, all my colleagues. Before I begin speaking here, just, Mr. Ellis, let me be clear about one thing, because it just kind of occurred to me. I was favoring alternative three. But just in terms of extra parking spots, if it was alternative two and we actually built that to city standards, the portion up to where it made the turn and went north, could you get, you know, you could on at least one side of the street, you could get seven, eight, ten parking spots in there, and possibly both sides, depending on, we build that, what, to twenty-eight feet or something?
Yeah, Mayor Case, I could easily see parking on one side of the roadway, two sides of the roadway. I think we'd get complaints from the neighborhood, and they would ask us to park, post no parking on one side of the road. But definitely, one side of the road open to parking, since it's not connected all the way to Valley View Road. It would be exclusive use of the neighborhood. I think that'd be possible, the number of stalls that you might be able to fit in there. I'd want to keep them away from Dell Road, so wouldn't want them crowded in the intersection itself. But yeah, easily five, maybe six.
Okay, it might be significant when we're only talking twelve extra, yeah.
Yeah.
That might be a consideration to build that out. And I know that we'd have to in the developer's agreement figure out who's going to plow it and, you know, maintain it. Okay. Well, the, first place, again, thank you for being involved, coming out. You know that, I hope you know, each of us up here love the city as much as you do. Thank you, you can say, yeah, I'll call you back. Thank you. You know, we're your neighbors, right? We live here, we care for the city. I've been in Eden Prairie since seventy-nine, basically, most of it. Lived in my house thirty-five years. I, again, as I said earlier, have probably been a part of approving or disapproving, whatever, voting on, I don't even know, two-hundred-some development projects. We've, well, the councils I've been a part of, we've always tried to, to listen to the contiguous neighbors. Agreement does not, if we don't agree, does not mean we did not listen. And I think sometimes that gets confusing, that listening should mean we'll vote exactly the way you want. We have, not that we don't fully consider all of your perspectives, and not that that's maybe more important in some ways, but it's one of many factors we consider as we approve projects across the city. You've heard of affordable housing mentioned. We're trying to keep a price point in our housing continuum from, AMI means average median income. And so we actually have some apartments at the thirty percent, thirty AMI, up to fifty. We have a couple buildings in the city that are nearly a hundred percent affordable housing. And that's about the only way you can live in this city in an affordable circumstances, in an apartment. But when it comes to townhomes, we've not built a townhome development, except for one, I think, what was it, eight units, in the last fifteen years.
Ten units.
Ten units in the last fifteen years. We don't get townhomes anymore. The idea of getting five affordable townhome units, I, I mean, that's super, super rare. Dyna was trying to force single-family home affordable units, you can imagine how difficult that is. So affordability's a piece we look at. We certainly look at sustainability and environmental issues. I'm, I'll give, I'll give a call out to Nancy Lukens, my good friend, that she and I were elected in nineteen ninety-four to the council. We authored the tree preservation policy. I would, I bet we've, because of our policy, probably, I'm gonna make this up, a couple hundred thousand trees? I don't know, a lot of trees, Eden Prairie's tree today. In fact, two-treeted in some areas. It's a couple developments, when they take a tree out, they don't have any place to put trees. So the tree issue is, is huge and critical. And, and we care much about that. That being said, you can't, you can't, this is private land, we don't own it. You can't allow and manage private land development unless some trees come down. We've always argued to try to keep what you can, keep it around the periphery. We've always tried to transition as best we can. I always say that our goal and objective as a city council is to singularly. I always say that. Our goal and objective as a city council is to. All right, that might have been a mistake. Really weird when you see yourself, especially double. But I always say that our, since I've said it now three times, that our goal is to do singularly what's best for the people of Eden Prairie, realizing that's broad when we approve or don't approve projects. And then to mitigate as many of the negative consequences, impacts to contiguous neighbors that we can. Make it, in other words, approve the project if we need to approve it for the good of everyone, and then make it as palatable as we can based on the input of what is this impact for people going to be. I have no issue, zero issue with the forty-two home density, zero. And I think you've heard none of us do. Partly because we have always, I mean, in twenty-seven years, this is so normal for what we have approved. And in fact, if, I, I was part of the approval process of the apple orchard, I think I'm the only one up here. And when that came in, and they were looking at single-family home developments, transitioning into low-density townhomes, heritage, three houses, units per acre, transitioning to a little bit higher density, four-point-three, into a little bit higher, up on the west side of Dell, into eight-point-two. I mean, this is just what we do. If this had been a large PUD, I guarantee you it would have been higher than four point, than six-point-eight on this parcel, absolutely. In fact, you know this, I've said this, shared this with many of you, the, in the nineties, when, when I, we would look, and we were preparing to look for the apple orchard to develop this DeBono property we thought would be part of the apple orchard project, and this was going to be the gas station. If you look at the quadrants of Eden Prairie, in, at a high level, don't panic, we are never gonna build another gas station in Eden Prairie for all time, I guarantee you. No, I mean, that's, that's kind of, yeah, I mean, it's kind of obvious with electric cars, whatever. We'll never build another gas station. But back before houses were in here, this, if you look at each quadrant, Southwest didn't have a gas station. And, and the convenience of that would be pretty cool. If it had already been there, you'd be using it every day to put one in after houses were, that's impossible, right? So at any rate, as we've looked at this over then the next, you know, five years, ten years, and, and every three, four years, staff comes to us and says, these are all the open parcels across the whole city. This is what's left. And this parcel often was up, and it was just, in our minds, obvious that it would be medium density and possibly, I have no idea, numbers never come up until a project comes to us. And by the way, we don't, a lot of people say, you know, we go out to get these dense projects to make more money for somebody, not us. I mean, I mean, for the people of Eden Prairie, yes, we always look at tax base. Because, by the way, your tax rate has dropped the last three to four years, which is the amount of dollars you pay for a thousand dollars of value. Now, if your taxes are going up, your home's going up, that's great. But the tax rate's been going down, why? Because we are paying attention to our tax base. We're not just trying to grow the thing out. But back in the seventies, early Metropolitan Council days, Eden Prairie was predicted to be a hundred and twenty thousand, the density of St. Louis Park. And of course, we don't drive that, it's what the market does. And so when the market in the eighties and nineties built cul-de-sacs on half-acre lots, our projected, you know, total populations dropped. And so now we're looking at, I don't know, I mean, we adjust it all the time, seventy-five? We'll probably cap out at eighty thousand? We don't drive for that. It's like, you look at the open space land, you look at the Golden Triangle and all the apartment buildings up there, and you kind of start to project, you know, I think we'll have about eighty thousand. And by the way, former councils, and I've been part of this, and Kathy's, well, all of us have been part of it for at least recently, that it's so well-planned, that we planned our sewer and water and water tower and, and water treatment facility and our road system, we planned for eighty thousand. When people say, oh, it's gonna be so crowded, no. This, this is what the plan was all along, from the sixties. We've had amazing, really foresight in some of our leaders. So forty-two doesn't bother me at all. The road, if, if this was Russia or something, where we just made the decision and didn't care what people thought, okay, Russia's a bad example. If, if we were like autocratically make, allowed to make decisions in an apolitical environment, I don't mean allowed, I mean, I love the politics, I love the fact that you all are here and influencing the process. But if politics was not involved, Valley should connect, as, as well as many, many other roads across the city to allow people to move around. Let me give you an example, a couple roads in the nineties, we, we chose not to connect. Residents poured out, one of them is up on Forest Hill Road, if you know up by, on Forest Hill Elementary. We did not connect it into Baker. Is it a big decision, big deal, probably not. But today, all the people that drove us not to connect it, they're gone. They don't live there, well, a couple of them, but most of them don't live there anymore. Now the people that live there have to, they don't even know they had a chance, they could have gotten right out to Baker. Now they have to circuitously go all the way around and get back out to Baker. And, you know, it's fine, that's why I'm okay not connecting Valley tonight, it's fine. It's, it's not the end of the world. In twenty-five years, when you're all not here, and let's, and Pioneer Trail will be four-lane. And let's say the worst case happens, which could happen, the county could close off the median at Cedar Forest Road. Very, very sensible, if you look at the whole Pioneer Trail, they easily could close that median, have a right-in, right-out, and make you either, well, they won't, aren't gonna do it if we don't connect the road. But I'm just saying that if we did connect Valley through, they, they could so easily close that out. And if, if, actually, they could do that anyway. And if they did, the people living there in twenty-five years would deeply regret the decision that they couldn't shoot out to Dell and get a signalized intersection to go west. However, to me, in my mind, that's a fifty-five, forty-five, you know? I'm fine tonight saying that the impacts on all of you right now are so negative, and I'm agreeing with you, that the positive gain for future residents that I won't be alive to witness is not worth it. I, I get it. So it sounds like we're probably all on. So it sounds like we're probably all on the same page that, let's not connect the road. I do believe we need to keep the right-of-way. It'll never happen within my lifetime, and I'm looking at some young people, so probably within yours, but not within some of your lifetimes. It'll never happen. But if, now, I know this is impossible for you to imagine tonight, but if in 25 years, it is so bad because people can't get out on the Pioneer Trail, that the same 100 residents that live in your homes that are, you're no longer living there, come to the council and say, please, build that road, we'll be able to do that. We'll never do it, by the way, over top of all the residents not wanting it. But I could see a day when residents could come and say, okay, now we've been living with this mistake for 25 years, please build the road. So I want to have the right-of-way. I want to have a sidewalk or a bike trail, I don't care, that allows all of your neighbors to get to Dell and then get into the trail system and, you know, go down to Richard T. Anderson. I want all, whatever, the Big Woods, whatever's down there. I want that. So, and I'm just fine with the 42, and I think we should build that. So I would vote tonight for the project, 42 home, townhomes. I've got all kinds of little things like plant, I walked it today. There's a huge basswood tree on the very eastern border. They live to be 250 years old. I'm assuming that gets saved. It looked like it did. Definitely the big maple tree that's already been talked about. We also, oh, the privacy fence, I definitely want to be built, even if, well, now that we build, if we did, if you all agree with me, if we built the road as standard road, so it had five to six, seven, eight different parking spots, it may squeeze a little bit, but definitely build the nice fence. We'll save more trees on the southeast side because we won't have a road there now. We'll just have a trail. And if there's a few homes in there that we need to buffer more, throw, there was a lot of concern about trees tonight, that the trees are not, our preservation policy is not ma, we don't charge a fee or a fine. It's, if you can't put the trees on the property, there's not enough, we still collect the money for it, and then we go plant trees in parks. So we use the money. It's good, it's good for all of us. But I would say if we can, take some of that money and just load trees along the south border, load trees along the east border, and just put a lot more trees in, and then use the money for that. So let's not, the staff, I'm kind of suggesting, if the council agrees with me, we can talk about that. But let's go ahead and take less in lieu, or whatever, just work with Paul T. to put even more trees in, maybe than what they had planned to. And just, I know, Mark, I'm getting to just, oh, the blue home, I know this is so minor, and all of you are like, whatever. But that blue home is the John Rogers home from the 1920s. Okay, you go, whatever. So it is one of our more historic homes in town. It's going to be destroyed. I walked it today. It's in pretty bad shape. It'd be nice if it could be lifted and moved to a Habitat for Humanity lot. I don't know if that's even beginning to be workable. It needs to be documented, though, so we need historically pictures taken of it. John Rogers, if you know Mike Rogers from the fire department, that's his great-grandpa. So, I think that's it. So, Mark, go ahead, and if I want to add anything else, I'll add it in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just clarify that what you said, that we're all in agreement on something, we are not.
Okay.
All right, and.
I guess I was thinking majority, but go ahead.
Okay, because I think it's a big point to make, because I was not in favor of those setbacks on that 3,000, you know, I was not.
Okay.
And by not being, you know, we agreed on the, you know, as far as the rule, but not the setbacks itself there on the property.
Okay.
So I think I just want to clarify that.
Yep.
Can I, Councilmember Freiberg, sure. So when you say setbacks, you mean lot size, correct? What you say, are you talking about the waiver? Say that again, sorry.
The 3,000 to 2,000 square feet for the lots, that's bothered me the most.
So just for point of clarification, and Julie can weigh in here, too. So it's lot size, so size of lots. And in our code, and I think you see in the narrative in the packet, that, in our code is 3,000. Paul T. says that a majority of our townhomes, and townhomes built everywhere, right, are kind of more in that 1,800 to 2,400, and we agree with that. So I'm not saying, I mean, I could argue our code is actually outdated when it comes to the 3,000 because you don't see tons of townhomes built to the 3,000 because many townhome developments now have an outlot that they dedicate. So previously, they would use maybe land that is in the outlot or in other parcels that they separate as outlots for open space, and they used to make those part of the parcel for each townhome. So I just, I wanted to explain that, that that's kind of the staff's rationale for the recommendation for lot size.
Okay. Well, I very much trust the staff, that they've vetted this and that they've looked at this in terms of the 38, actually, but 21 other townhome projects that are similar in the last 30 years, so. Okay, so, Mark, you've let your, so just so I get a sense here, because usually, before we move, and you can still ask questions or say something, but we never, we never like to go into a situation where it's a two, three vote or something that's odd. So I have a sense, you correct me here, but I have a sense there's four of us that would vote for the project tonight with not connecting the road, keeping the right-of-way, and then we'll have to define exactly whether the portion of Valley that gets built is to city standards or not. We'll clarify that. But is that fair? So it looks like we've got four votes tonight at least.
I do want to make sure that sidewalk exists, you know.
Well, it's on the plans.
Okay, the most important point is that's how kids will get to the school bus.
No, it's on the plans.
Okay.
Now, whether it's a bike trail or a sidewalk, I guess I'd leave that to staff to determine, and then who's going to maintain and that kind of a thing. Okay, Councilmember Ryan.
Yeah, I have a question. The new townhome from the roof height perspective to the existing house height perspective, is it, where are we? Can you tell me how high up? I think one of the, one of the points somebody was making, that height.
Is there a way, Director Kleema, to pull up the?
From the planning commission. We saw, we all, I mean, we all had access to that. We saw.
We saw it, but I don't remember all of the detail, right, so.
Or, yeah, okay.
By the way, I didn't watch, I didn't watch twice.
And keep in mind, too, just a clarification, that the townhomes on the west side of Dell are two stories with the gabled roof.
So I was wondering, one of the concern I heard was the light coming to the bedroom.
No, I only heard the light coming from cars. I never heard a light. I mean, to have a neighbor's light coming from bedroom, I mean, you're much closer to your neighbors. You're, I mean, I've been to your house. You're 20 feet away from your neighbors. Does light come from your neighbors into your home?
So I don't understand that. I mean, you cannot compare my house, my.
But it is, though.
My house is the back end.
And it is, though, you know.
I did see it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
One point, Mr. Mayor, is that the townhomes that would neighbor, or, you know, that the existing townhomes to the south, for example, is they would look north to those buildings. They're looking at the sides.
They're looking at what?
The sides.
They're looking at the sides of the townhomes. And so while there are some architectural windows that have been added, that's been a request, actually, of the staff to have those added windows, to have some stone wrapped on the side. You know, we want those ends to look nice, that face neighboring properties and public right-of-way. So they're very, the small windows on the side, I just, I struggle to think that there would be illumination coming from inside the townhouse to the neighboring homes.
Thank you for that.
Yes, of course.
I did hear it, so I will take it, but let's not, we'll lose control of, okay. You know what, I'm gonna make a chair's prerogative. Would you come forward quickly and ask that? Well, someone else, whoever had that elevation question, just come up and explain that really quickly. This is out of order because your public hearing's been stopped. But if someone would come up fast and just share, well, tell me out loud, what's the elevation issue?
What is the elevation to the single-family homes on Preston from the back of the townhomes?
Got it. So that was in the diagram, the chart that we just saw there. And are you talking like, are you talking like above sea level elevation, or actually the window to the window?
I'm talking about the single-family homes, the back of their rooms.
Right. Will the water come down, or is that where you're, no?
That it's elevated much higher.
Got it. So will you see, will those homes see the townhomes?
Oh, they will, but.
Yes. So what, I'm trying to get your point. What's your question?
I want to see the elevation difference from the single-family homes.
Oh, you know what, we've seen that, so I'm going to just say that we've seen it and we're okay with it. But I understand that your question is that. I will say, my concern when I was out there was that that tree line would stay, and it sounds like it is, particularly the huge maple and the huge basswood. And then when I drove into your Preston cul-de-sac, you have a fence in the back. So we're talking about, you know, going up above the fence, right? And then whether you would see parts of that town, and you will, we see each other as neighbor, we're neighbors, right? But you've got an amazing tree line, and what we're asking the developer tonight is to plant evergreens like crazy on the east side and the south side. And we'll work with staff to make sure what my crazy means, and then they can implement. All right. Council, is somebody ready to make a motion?
Does Lisa have it sitting in front of her?
Or you?
Yes, I do. So we have to.
Close public hearing.
No, we already closed the public hearing, right? So we have to adopt a resolution for a PUD concept plan review on 6.13 acres. And so we have some adjustments, correct?
We can do that at the very end. Go ahead and make through, read through.
And approve the first reading of the ordinance for PUD district review with waivers and a zoning district change from rural to RM 6.5 on 6.13 acres, and adopt a resolution for preliminary plat to divide two parcels into 43 lots and one outlot on 6.3 acre, 1.3 acres, and adopt a resolution for findings of fact in support of, sorry. In support of park dedication fees, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Okay. Staff, you've heard, I believe, all of our council conditions, and we have our attorney here as well. Do we need to restate them? Can they, will they be in record? We'll get to see this again. By the way, for the public, nothing gets approved until second reading. Second reading is in, well, usually two weeks. Will it be at our second meeting or a month away?
Actually, Mayor, I think sometimes it, to prepare the development agreement, it's not the next meeting, it's one after that.
So at that time, then, all of our suggestions and conditions get in there, and if we have questions with that, we question that. And we clarify, and we change, tweak, whatever. And then we, once we approve second reading, then it's legal in the law, and then, you know, developer can go off and begin to make some additional plans, so.
Yeah, really quickly, Mayor, so just, can you guys add to this or clarify this? So Valley Road not going through, but the third.
We did not thoroughly clarify. We gotta do that.
Right, right.
So, and we haven't voted, obviously, yet. We will, but so are you all, so we, I heard consensus. We don't want the road to go through. We want a sidewalk. The question is, does that portion that does get built, get built to city standards or stay a private road? It will change the width. If we could build it to city standards, it potentially could park five, six, seven cars down there. What's your thought?
So the question there, I have a question. So in the future, we still have the option?
We, it's, the city has a dedicated easement right-of-way. Forever. We have that all over the city, by the way.
It seems like it would be, make more sense to make it to city standards, have the parking. And if we ever have to extend it, you don't have to go in and cut down a bunch of stuff.
I think it's, also, I think the developer should accrue the money to build that in the future, so it doesn't come from.
I don't agree with that, and I'll tell you why. We don't do that. Secondly, it's, this is on us. This is a choice we're making to someday build this road, possibly or not. And it could be 50 years at that point. This is my opinion. You can disagree, and others can agree with PG, that we should not encumber the developer on an issue that's our issue.
So if developer build that now, it will cost them X dollars, right? So he's saving, or they're saving that dollar by.
And that's why we're hoping to additional the trees, and we're hoping that.
So what, so I guess part of the staff then negotiate with the developer what else we can benefit the residents and the city.
Right, which includes your other conditions related to.
And we do want the fence.
Additional trees, burming, landscaping, quality of fence.
Quality siding on the houses.
Okay, correct. Okay?
Yeah, no.
Not looking at you, Mark, but you've let me know that you mean I'll be voting for this, so.
You are looking.
But, well, I'll look at all of you. All right, so was the motion seconded?
No.
No.
No. Second.
Second. All right, further discussion, further questions, further comments. Mark, anything you want to ask to understand or more better?
No, as long as my point is made as far as those setbacks.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, 4-1. Audience, thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you for your input. Appreciate the way that you handled yourself, and we felt respected tonight, so thank you so much. All right, moving on, payment of claims. Is any, any items on payment of claims to question? Or poll, or, okay. Is there a motion to approve payment of claims?
Move the motion to approve the payment of claims.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Do we have to do roll call?
Oh, roll call.
Roll call, thank you, sir.
Roll call, I apologize.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Tumi.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. Real quickly, reporter council member, just my issue, and I kind of mentioned already on Friday, I'm meeting with mayors. It's just really to have that conversation, that our crime stats are actually lower. But when you're the victim of a crime, it doesn't matter about stats. And that's what happened in Minnetonka. Their crime stats are down, their car crimes are down. It's their first carjacking ever, that I think in years. But when it happens to you, it's a big deal. And the press is so strong today, it's being covered so much on these carjackings. So Friday, my goal is just to get the mayors to talk about what's the next step. It's definitely meeting with Mary Moriarty, County Attorney, and definitely trying to make some effort to decide, how can we be part of this conversation? How can we help? It might be pulling city managers-in-chief of police in next time, again, like we did back a year and a half ago. Anyway, just want to let you know and let the public know that we are all concerned about this and we're not paying attention to it. Okay, anything else? Anything else to come before the council this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn?
In that case, move the adjourn, move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, this meeting is adjourned.